In accordance with Section 5 of the Open Public Meetings Act, the advice that noticed of this meeting was made by posting on the bullet board in town hall and mailing to the officially designated newspapers a list of the meeting dates annually indicating that this meeting would be taking place on Monday, June 7th, 2021 via Zoom webinar. Craig Plentner?
Here.
Jody Sharma?
Here.
Joyce Segal?
Here.
Steve Togger?
Here.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Here.
Shandru Parjani?
Yeah.
Vice Chairwoman Jessica Glad?
Here.
Chairman Joseph Steinberg?
Here. Okay, we're going to begin with minutes of the April 19th meeting.
There's no minutes. I didn't circulate.
There aren't any minutes yet, okay. But we're going to now deal with the memorializations. The first one is calendar 3779-21, Eric and James Moffitt, 19 Bailey Road, Melbourne. Before we begin, I want to thank Joy Segal, who is our proofreader extraordinaire. I try to be, but she is way ahead of me. And thank you so much, Joy, for pitching in every month and reading these memorializations. I know I'm speaking for myself and the board and Rob. You do a great job and thank you. By the way, folks, I want you to know that our other proofreader extraordinaire, Mary McNett, who was not reappointed to the board, I did speak with her the other day, and I have to make a confession. When she left the board, I think I spoke about her, but I did not add up the number of years correctly. Between the Township Committee and the Zoning Board of Adjustment, she spent 33 years working for the township of Melbourne, not being paid for any of it. And she definitely misses being on the board and misses going around looking at the houses. And while I'm on that subject, let me be a little more direct on that. When I have visited properties, sometimes the landowners or the applicants will come out. And of course, they always want to discuss the matters before the board, which I tell them we cannot do. They always then say, oh, there was X number of people who have already been to the house on behalf of the board. And I'd like to say that that number is four, five, et cetera. It's not. It's usually one or two. And in talking to at least one other member of the board, this member said to me something that really rang a bell with me. People want to be on the zoning board of adjustment because it gives them a sense of belonging to the community, of having a say in how the community develops. But this person said to me, they don't want to put the time in that they have to. And I want to say to those of you who have not gone around and looked at these various properties, unless you do, you cannot really understand what's going on, not by looking at the documents and the plans that have been submitted by the applicants. Very often, those plans will play down the difficulties with the case. And I urge you, please, take the time, get in the car. This is a relatively small community, doesn't take long. Go around, look at the properties, and remember what I've said on many occasions. And that is that you do not discuss anything to do with the case with the applicants. And you tell them that you cannot discuss it with them. And you can call them in advance or ring the doorbell and announce that you're there and that you'd like to go around and look at the property. But it is very important, I think, to make the effort to go around and look at these properties. Now, I know that in some instances, I'm talking to the choir, but in other instances, I know that it takes some time. You've got to make the time to do it. And I know some of you are sitting there and saying, easy for him to say, he's retired. Well, that's true. But I have to say that even in my early years on the board, when I wasn't fully retired, I still made it my business to go around and look at the properties. So I'm going to urge each one of you to please do that. Once again, Joy, thank you so much for pitching in and doing the hard lifting, working with Rob to make these memorializations as perfect as they can possibly be. And speaking of memorializations, the first one we're going to do tonight is Erica and James Moffitt on 19 Bailey Road in Melbourne. I assume you've all had the opportunity to read these three memorializations. Does anyone have anything they want to correct or add to the memorialization? If not, is there a motion to approve the memorialization on calendar 3779-21, 19 Bailey Road? Is there a motion?
Much to approve 377121.
Is there a second?
Second.
Craig Plentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. That memorialization is approved. The next one is Samantha and Mark Neeler or Miler, I don't know how they pronounce it, at 49 Pine Street in Melbourne. Any additions or corrections on this memorialization? If not, is there a motion to approve it?
I move approval of memorialization to calendar number 3787-21.
Is there a second?
In second.
Thank you.
You can't vote on it. You didn't vote on the matter.
Oh, you didn't?
Second.
Who was that? Craig?
Craig.
Craig Plentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Last one is calendar 3795-91, Edward and Danielle Shannon at 9 Kilmer Drive in Short Hills. Are there any additions or corrections to this memorialization? Is there a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve 379521.
Second.
Second by Steve Togger.
Craig Plentner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Turturis?
Yes.
Jessica Glad?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Now, the next matter on the agenda is an application, which is calendar 3784-21. Let me make an announcement on this matter. It is being carried to the meeting of August 16th. That's August 16th, 2021. Without further notice or a further notifications of adjoining property owners within 200 feet.
Mr. Chairman, that's for 17 Woodland Road, Lisa and Robert Dela Cruz, right?
That's Lisa and Robert Dela Cruz at 17 Woodland Road.
So I just want to confirm that that material was not distributed yet, right?
It was distributed.
It was distributed already.
Was heard.
Waiting for revisions.
Okay, got it. The revision, right, wasn't distributed.
They haven't been distributed. I'm going to see.
That's right.
Right.
Their architect announced at the meeting that he wanted an opportunity to make some changes, which we haven't seen yet. And I'm sure we'll see them well before August 16th. Right, the first matter on the agenda tonight is Brian Lau at 80 Cypress Street in Melbourne, a matter that I'm going to recuse on. So that matter will now have to be chaired by our Vice Chair, Jessica Glad. Jessica, your honor.
Yeah, I was just going to say, how do we work this? Is Joe going to sign off and then someone will call him to let him know?
Put him back in the attendees.
That would be advisable.
That'd be a good idea.
Okay.
Bye, everybody.
Okay, let me just see. Okay, so I need John James.
So Eileen, just a bit of housekeeping. This is an application that involves a form of a use variance for floor area ratio. So it requires five affirmative votes. And just for clarity, how many members are eligible? Do we have a seven-member board for this?
We do, yes.
Thank you. Sorry, Jessica.
Yep, no problem. Okay, so I see we have the Lau family, but I'm not seeing them. There we go.
Is there anybody else that I need to bring over, John?
Oh, no, that's it for tonight.
Okay, so this is the matter 80 Cypress Street, Brian Lau, calendar 3790-21. And can we start by swearing the witnesses, please?
Who's ever going to testify? If you would just please raise your right hands. Okay, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, none but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
I do. Okay, if you would just, your names for the record, please.
Bob, Brian Lau.
Deborah Lau.
John James, architect.
And John, just to get this taken care of, do you want to give us your qualifications?
Sure.
Architect.
I'm a registered architect in New Jersey, New York, and Connecticut. I have a bachelor degree in architecture from University of Virginia and a master's degree from Columbia University. I'm the principal in a seven-person architectural and interior design firm in Maplewood, New Jersey. We specialize in older houses and historic renovations, as well as single-family residential. I've been practicing in this area almost 30 years and have presented before this board on numerous occasions.
And your license is in good standing?
They are all in good standing, yes.
Great, okay, you have been accepted. Okay, so who would like to start?
I'll start. Good evening, everyone, Ms. Vice Chairwoman and members of the board. Thank you for taking your time tonight to hear our case. My name is Brian Lau, my wife Deborah, my daughter Zoe, and my son Zachary. Am I right? My wife, daughter, and I moved to Melbourne in 2018, after having spent considerable amount of time living in New York City. We spent that next year looking for a home to settle down. And we came across, finally, after having looked, searched through a number of houses and limited inventory, we came across 80 Cypress. You know, we loved the neighborhood, the school being right across the street, and such convenient access to two playgrounds, you know, very easily accessible. I mean, the decision didn't come easily for everyone. I mean, I think one of us, my daughter, had a very large wish, and it was for us to move the master bedroom upstairs to be closer to her sleeping quarters. And it wasn't a terrible idea. And, you know, at the time, you know, we moved the master upstairs, we create another family room. It just creates more of a living space for us and more functionally living space and a more efficient space. You know, fast forward, you know, in six months, you know, we find out where my wife is pregnant. We're going to have a second child. So now, you know, in addition to everything that's going on, you know, our family's growing. And we now have more of an urgency to create that additional space. So, I mean, so now we're looking for an architect, you know, we find John James, who's going to help us architect design, you know, that would help, you know, suit our needs. And we're looking to remain aligned with, you know, the neighboring community and, you know, the appearance of the community. You know, but, you know, being as though we're on a corner lot, you know, poses some challenges that we're hoping to be able to overcome. And John quickly put us in our place and pointed out those challenges right away. But hopefully, we can, you know, sort something out and make it all work. And I'll leave the technical details over to John to go over.
Okay. Before we do, are there any questions of this witness from the board? Okay, Eileen, are you able to see if there's anyone in the audience for this matter?
I don't know until after.
Okay, okay.
For questions.
Okay. John, do you want to take over?
Sure, I'll go ahead and start now. Thank you. The applicants, Brian and Deborah Lau, request permission from the Board of Adjustment to expand their non-functional garage and to add a new master suite on the second floor of their property located at 80 Cypress Street. I'm going to share my screen and show you the drawings that I presented, that the board has copies of. So you can see the site plan here. It shows their house at the corner of Cypress Street and Myrtle Avenue. Just to give you a context for this, this is an area map showing it, and the house is on the corner here.
John, excuse me, I'm sorry. We're going to assume that every exhibit or document that you're referring to has already been provided to the members of the board and are in the application packet. If they're not, can you please point those out to us so that we can identify them for the record and mark?
Yes, this is going to be Exhibit A. These are the only documents that are not a part of your package.
Okay, so this is, we're going to call this A1.
Okay, A1, and I'll mark that, and I will send that to you and Eileen. And it consists of eight neighborhood photographs and this aerial site location plan, number nine. So the house is located at the corner of Myrtle Avenue and Cypress Street. It's diagonally across from the Wyoming School in Melbourne. And Myrtle Avenue is full of two-story houses. The house directly across the corner is pretty much like this, directly across two-and-a-half-story houses with a full attic. The houses directly across the street are all two stories and have attic spaces as well. The Lau's house is a much smaller, essentially one-story with two bedrooms built in the attic upstairs. And when you look at it on the side, here you can see the screening on the corner. When you look at it on the side, it has a small one-car garage facing the side street, but the garage is actually too small to pull in and open your car door. So there are a couple of deficiencies that we really need to fix when we're working on this house. One is to expand the garage to give them a functional garage. And two, we have a house with a ground floor master bedroom and then two kids' bedrooms upstairs. And this is really totally abnormal for the area. And we're asking to move the master bedroom in addition on the second floor adjacent to those two bedrooms and to turn the first floor into a family room. Now, the hardships and the conditions, so we need two variances tonight. The first variance, and these are itemized on our drawings and in the application we prepared for you. Because we're on a corner lot in Myrtle Avenue, and we have only a 60-foot wide lot by 110 feet, we have two 40-foot front yard setbacks. So the existing house is set back 40 feet as required on Cypress Street, but the existing house is non-conforming at 18.3 feet from Myrtle Avenue. This is an existing non-conforming condition. If we were to apply all the zoning requirements to this lot with a front yard of 40 feet and the other side yard of 12 feet, we would really have an eight-foot slice right here on the left-hand side of the house that goes back 53 feet on the lot. And we could probably stack two or three containers here, and that's what you would be legally able to build on this property. So this property is totally non-conforming. There's not an area over top of the existing footprint where we can build a second story even within that footprint that is allowed. So we're requesting on our floor plan here, first floor, you can see the existing garage here, and you can see how narrow it is. We're going to widen it from 10 feet to 13 and a half feet on the side. And to do that, we need a variance for the front yard setback of 18.3 feet. And within this, we're going to keep a kitchen breakfast room. We're going to put a family room where the current master bedroom is, and we're going to create a study in this corner where the existing master closet was. And then up on the second floor, we're going to build over top of that new garage, and we're going to add a master bedroom with a bathroom and a closet. And we're going to connect that with a hallway to the existing front two bedrooms. We're going to make the hall bath slightly larger, and we add a laundry room. So we're requesting an 18.3-foot setback for the first-story addition with the garage. But up on the second floor, we're going to move the master bedroom and the laundry room back. Master bedroom comes back about 4 foot 9 inches. Laundry room comes back about 18 inches. So instead of building a sheer wall right at the 18-foot 3 line, we're going to step those back so that when you look at them on the elevation here, you see the front of the house maintaining the 40 feet. We're putting some gable dormers into the existing bedrooms and doing a new gable canopy on the front of the, over the front door there, so it has more matching contours there of the roof line itself. And then on the side of the house, we're going to be taking the existing mudroom and setting it back in. We're taking the existing garage and expanding it to the side, creating a new one-story roof on that and setting the master bedroom behind that. This is the master closet. This is the laundry room. This is the existing line of the second floor of the house, which is under the attic eaves. So we're taking this house and we're building the master here. This is looking from the side, from the other side yard, and it's being built on the back. And we're maintaining the existing scale of the house with the two dormers on the front. The final elevation at the garage shows the garage with the master bedroom above it and the existing deck in the back. So we're simply, if we go back to the site plan to kind of show you again here, we're simply adding on to this area on the side of the existing garage on the first floor, and we're building over top of that space up on the second floor. So it requires a C variance for the 18.3-foot front yard setback. And it requires a D variance because we actually exceed the allowable floor area ratio for the property. And we exceed that by a total of 238 square feet or a total of 3.6%. So those are the variances we're adding, asking for 238 square feet and 3.6%. And the reason for this is, one, we're on a corner location. We have absolutely no areas on the existing site that we can build within the current constraints. And so we're having to go outside of those boundaries to do this. Having two 40-foot setbacks on a 60-foot deep lot just leaves nothing left with any other side or rear yard setbacks. And the house needs to be updated, one, to kind of meet the character and vogue of the neighborhood. Having three bedrooms and having the master bedroom split on a different floor from the other family bedrooms is a hardship, and it's not something that exists in a predominant fashion in this neighborhood. This is a neighborhood that's been gradually changing over, and much, much larger houses are being built here. And we're asking for a modest increase in this house. You can see, here it is. Here is the screening on the front of the street, and now you can see adjacent houses there being built along it. One of the other things is you'll notice that Cypress Street is also unusual in that all of the houses here are somewhere between a 10-foot and a 20-foot setback. It's a street that's totally non-conforming within the Melbourne zoning area. So when you look at the aerial map, you can see like on Cypress Street, the 40 feet stays pretty consistent. But, excuse me, Myrtle Avenue, all along Myrtle Avenue here, all of the houses are approximately half of what the normal setback should be here. You can see, like, when you look at Cedar Street and you see the setbacks there, the houses on Myrtle Avenue are essentially, the backyards are in the front yards of the adjacent streets. So Myrtle Avenue is one of these kind of unusual anomalies in the Melbourne zoning code, where practically every house on this street requires a front yard setback variance. When you're on the corner lot, though, it's very hard because you have nowhere to go because you can't build it into a deep backyard because you're locked in. This is just showing you some of the other houses in the scale on the street directly behind them. So you can see that what we're proposing from our scale point of view is very much in keeping with the neighborhood in terms of doing a house that keeps the front roof and then on the side of it, that brings that roof through and then just does a slightly higher but smaller gable for the master bedroom addition. So we're here to add the master bedroom on the second floor, to expand the garage on the first floor, and to create a family room in the existing master bedroom. And I think I've shown that the non-conformities also occur all along Cypress Street in this block next to Glen Avenue. And so in terms of dealing with the front yard setback and the variance for that, we have very mature screening on the existing property that really hides that. And the condition that we have there is really the predominant condition on Cypress Road itself. And in where we are adding our new additions, and we can do that on the second floor, we are pushing back beyond the 18.3 feet so that we create a greater setback from the street where it's possible to do that. In terms of dealing with the floor area ratio variance, you know, again, it's these flaws in the house that need to be rectified. It's very hard when you're on a corner lot, you have two cars, you have a single-car garage, and you can't pull into your garage and open your car door. It's just, you know, it's a basic flaw in this house and any others that are like it in the neighborhood. So it needs to be widened for that purpose. And they gave us the perfect area to build the master suite above the garage and the current mudroom right there, which are the one-story portions. So that's really what I have to go through. It's really the narrow lot on the front, the fact that it's a corner, the fact that it's 18.3 from the street existing, and the fact that we need to add up above that for the new spaces we wanted to. None of these spaces are huge. We are not overbuilding with the bulk for the area. Our roof heights are remaining where they are, and we're going slightly above that for the addition. But the addition is well below what the zoning heights that are allowed in the area. Even where you had the deck at the back, we're at about 30 feet for just our new gable at one point, and the rest of the house is at about 30. And the rest of the house is at about twenty five feet. So it's a minimal house where we could have gone thirty five feet in height. So in summary, I just want to say that the narrow corner lot and the two required front yard setbacks present an unusual and exceptional situation. That imposes a practical difficulty on my clients and hardship. In seeking to try to develop the property according to the development regulations and the zoning ordinance in Melbourne. The increase in the floor area ratio is required to update the house to the current standards and of the neighborhood. And to meet the growing needs of this family. It's not unreasonable to ask to have a master bedroom suite on the same level as your kids. And this is a predominant feature of all the houses in this neighborhood. The existing front yard is being matched where we need to for the garage. And it's being set back beyond the eighteen point three feet on the second floor where we can. These improvements really are consistent with the neighborhood. The character and this application will not cause a detrimental detriment to the public good. Or an impairment of the intent and purpose of the zoning plan and the ordinance. We think there are benefits from this construction and from improving this house. In the neighborhood. And so for these reasons, we're asking the board to consider our application in a positive manner.
Thank you. Do you want to stop sharing your screen and then we could get everyone up on the board again? On the screen again, I mean, from the board. Okay, great. Board members, does anyone have any questions? Go ahead. Joy.
Thank you, Jessica. I have two questions.
Sure.
This one is a little bit maybe more for Eileen, but maybe also for the architect. The garage in this case is considered an attached garage because it's attached, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Do you know if the garage was always attached?
I I don't know if it was always attached. It appears like it was always attached. It could have been a breezeway maybe instead, but. There's certainly a side door and a mudroom connection there, so I think it was.
So as an attached garage, it does not count in the FAR, right?
As an attached garage, it. It counts towards FAR regardless.
It doesn't count.
It does count. Yes.
Attached or detached, both count.
Okay, okay, so that my other question, what's above the master bedroom suite? Is that an attic space or is that just like a cathedral ceiling?
It's just a cathedral ceiling. We put a decorative window up there rather than leaving the facade blank.
Okay, thank you.
But the cathedral ceiling doesn't go all the way up. We just felt that it needed a window up there. You know, there's several attics in the neighborhood that at least have a window at that level. As opposed to keeping a blank facade.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
John, could you please give us some testimony specifically? As to how the master, the new master bedroom of the garage will impact the neighbor in lot sixteen. As it pertains to light. Their view, anything along those lines based on your observation?
Well, the master bedroom suite, part of the reason we put it there with the garage itself, if I can share my screen here again, sorry. That's the one side yard setback that totally conforms. That's the side yard setback where it's set twenty feet off the property line. So the one story, the two story actually conforms. That and the front yard setback on Cypress Street are the only conforming setbacks on the property. We're required to have twelve feet and we're set back twenty feet for that facade, so it's not going to have any impact on the adjacent neighbor.
Okay, thank you.
Have a question.
This is a question for John. I thought if I heard you right, you said that the ten feet wide garage is now being expanded to thirteen feet. So it'll still be a one car garage or is it going to be a two? I just didn't quite get that.
Oh, it's it's, we only have enough room for a one car garage. We're creating more of a conforming one car garage. And because we're tight on FAR, we didn't go any bigger than thirteen and a half feet inside. If we didn't have that constraint, we would have built a fifteen foot wide garage inside.
Thank you.
Wolfgang.
Thank you. So you've mentioned that the floor area ratio that the variance was two hundred and thirty eight square feet?
Yes, that's correct.
But the but the application says it's two hundred and forty six square feet.
We submitted a revised application to Eileen and it's actually two hundred and thirty eight square feet. That's what's shown on page one of our drawings. As well. And I think that was just a mistake on our part. So I have a copy. You know, in in my file here that shows it bubbled that was resubmitted, perhaps it didn't get put in your packet.
Okay.
But the actual number as shown on the lot coverage on our drawing. Number two shows the variance we're asking for as two hundred and thirty eight square feet or three point six percent.
Okay. And then do I understand correctly that on the side where there is a. Existing nonconforming side setback, there's no changes being made to that side?
No, there's no changes to that side of the house. The only thing we're doing on that side of the house. Is we're changing to a double window out the side that meets all egress requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Rob.
Thanks. Hey, John, along the lines of what Wolfgang pointed out, it also states on the application. That you're seeking relief for front setback at Myrtle Avenue of twenty one point seven feet. Is that accurate?
No, um, excuse me, we are, yes, excuse me, we, our front yard setback is the existing setback is eighteen point three feet. Which requires a front yard setback of twenty one point seven feet, correct?
So the existing is eighteen point three, but the variance you're seeking is twenty one point seven?
Yes, because the difference between the eighteen point three and the forty is twenty one point seven.
Are you doing any work on the Myrtle Avenue side?
No, we're, we are, excuse me.
Portico, right?
No, the portico is fine, but we're allowed to do an entry canopy that comes four feet into the setback. Because it's on brackets as opposed to columns. I mean, we'd be okay with columns as well, but it doesn't count its coverage if it's on.
But you don't actually need a front yard setback variance.
No, not on Cypress. We need a front yard setback on Myrtle.
Okay.
And then, John, the other question I have for you is that you referenced in one of your A one photos. Some screening or trees or hedgerow on the existing property. Is any of, is any of that mature screening going to be impacted by any of the construction that's anticipated?
No, it shouldn't be because it's set pretty far away from the house. So we're not anticipating on changing that screening. They actually like having the screening along the street for their house.
Nothing further, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Questions from the audience?
I do not see any hands raised.
Okay. So then I'm going to assume that we don't have any, oh, well, I should ask any comments from the board, from, sorry, from the audience.
Again, I see no hands.
Okay. So I'm going to close the public portion of this meeting. And then we can discuss as a board. So who would like to start?
Jessica, can I just say something before the deliberation begins, just to remind the board? That with regard to the application here. As you heard, they're seeking a front yard setback. Variance presumably based on the proofs as a C one hardship variance. They're also seeking an FAR variance. Where the board's focus has to be on whether you believe that the site will. Accommodate any problems associated with the proposed development. That has a larger floor area than that permitted by the ordinance. In addition to which you also need to determine whether the applicant has met the proofs for the negative criteria. As Mr. James referenced earlier, thank you.
Thanks, Rob.
Do you want to break into two votes, Rob, or one?
I'm sorry?
Do you want to break into two votes or one?
We should, we should, after the deliberation, however it goes, it should be broken down into two votes, one for the FAR and then one for the bulk variance.
I'll go first. So there's been significant redevelopment of that area along Myrtle and. I find this to be far more measured than what has gone on on that street. And I think it's, it's, it's a difference between a need and a want. And this to me looks like a, a. An application where the needs of the homeowner are met without overdeveloping the site. And it's a difficult site to develop and I think this is done in the most. Thoughtful and considerate manner. As it, as it pertains to the neighborhood and like I said, it's difficult corner location. So I would support this application.
Steve.
Yeah, I agree with with Greg, you know, I always appreciate it when applicants come and they want to make a meaningful and material upgrade to their homes. Compliments to them and to the architect that, you know, I just, I wanted folks to just appreciate that where the actual second floor is going. There's no variance needed for the, for the. Related to the neighbor in lot sixteen, who would might be most impacted by the, the addition. So it's a very good looking plan for a house that needs it. So I'm in support of the application.
Thank you, Steve.
Troy. I I agree as well. I too could support the application in both variances. I feel like. It's a difficult site. It's an undersized lot. The architect's done an excellent job of actually breaking down the mass, so it won't appear as some of the houses that are built in that area as like one. One giant mass. So I I think it's a really good application.
Shandru.
Likewise, Craig, Steve and Joy covered it all. I think. Great job here in terms of laying it out without increasing the footprint of the property on a corner lot. Always very challenging, so I could be supportive as well.
Anyone else? Okay, so I think we are ready to go to a vote on this. Rob, are you okay if we start? I guess we'll start with the with the setback variance?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move approval of the setback variance.
Second.
Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Shandru Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Black?
Yes.
Okay, and now we will go to the D variance and this is for the floor area ratio. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I move approval of the floor area ratio variance in the amount of two hundred and thirty eight square feet.
Second. Craig Plutner?
Yes.
Yodi Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togar?
Yes.
Wolfgang Taurus?
Yes.
Andrew Hargani?
Yes.
Jessica Black?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we do a little musical chairs now?
Oh, you know what? I gotta bring John back. Yeah, I gotta, we bring. Let me bring Joe back. I didn't lose him yet. Okay. Coming back and now. I need to bring. John back. I believe he's doing this one as well. Sorry, John, I picked you out and then I realized you're on this one as well, aren't you?
Yes, I'm just.
Who do I need? I need. Corey Wilf?
Yes.
And.
And Rich Keller and Brian Hirsch.
And then I'm. Yes, I'm recusing, so I'll go into the audience. Okay. Joe, you're muted. I I see you trying to talk, just unmute yourself.
Bottom left.
It took a while for it to pop up. Okay. So we're, we have one recusal on this case. And our second alternate. Shandru, Shandru. Is going to take the place of our vice chair. Who's recusing on this matter.
Thanks, Joe.
This is calendar. Thirty seven ninety one dash twenty. This matter was carried from the April nineteen. Meeting where no testimony on this case was heard. The applicants here are Corey and Jason Wilf. Who's going to testify on behalf of the applicants?
Well, I guess we'll get the most sworn in first.
All right, let's get Mr. James sworn in.
Okay, we'll just swear everybody in. Everyone just put up their right hands, please. Do you swear from testimony about to give tonight to be the truth, the whole truth comes by the truth?
All right, who's going to go? Who's going to start off?
I think Corey is the way to start off.
Yes, I'm going to start off. Nice to meet you all. I'm Corey and this is my husband Jason. We bought our house at thirty Montview at in two thousand and fourteen at the time we, I was pregnant with our first child. And since we have lived here for almost seven years, we now have three children. And so I think our needs for our house have grown tremendously because obviously at the time we didn't really know what we would need. And we've been working with Rich and Brian and John about how to make our house function better for us and our family. That grew a lot in five, six years. And so they'll tell you all the specifics, but basically it's come down to that we are over on our building coverage. But we are under on the overall lock coverage and floor area ratio. So John can give you all the specifics, but we just basically want to stay here. Our entire family is in short hills and walking distance from our house. And we want to be in our family and have our kids be near their cousins and just have more space and functionality for what's already here.
All right, who's going, who wants to testify next? But first of all, before we leave, is there anyone on the board? Or in the audience who has any questions of Corey? Anyone in the audience, Eileen?
No.
Anyone on the board? Have any questions of Corey? Okay, who's the next test? Rich Keller, Mr. Keller, you want to give us the benefit of your qualifications, please?
Sir.
And in what capacity are you going to be testifying tonight?
I'll be appearing on this application this evening.
I'll be appearing on this application this evening as both a licensed engineer and planner. I, I hold licenses in both. I've been licensed as an engineer since 1989 and as a planner since 1990. And I'm good at math, but I hate to keep adding up how, how many years that's been. It's been a while. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering with a concentration in Water Resources and Environmental Engineering. And that is from Rutgers University. I also have a Bachelor of Science in, I'm sorry, I held a Master's of Architecture with a concentration in Urban Planning and Design, and that is from the New Jersey Institute of Technology, where I was also an adjunct professor for approximately 11 years. I have appeared before this board, the planning board, actually 110 boards throughout the state of New Jersey. I'm also the, I have been the planning consultant to the borough of Caldwell. And I'm currently the engineering consultant to both the planning board and Board of Adjustment in Long Hill Township. My licenses are in good effect. And it's nice to be back for you guys.
Is there anyone on the board who has any questions of this witness as to his qualifications? I see none. I hear none. Proceed, Mr. Keller.
Thank you. I'd like to share the screen. I'm going to go to the exhibits that we provided, which is, it's what you have as part of your application package. It is, let me move the people's faces out of the way. There we go. It is a variance application plot plan, 30 Mountain U Avenue, tax lot 30 block 1502. And it is dated 215, 2021. The, um, the property in question, if I come up to the upper left-hand corner, the property in question is on the southerly side. Southerly being to the left side of this, of the drawing. Southerly side of Montview Avenue between Delwick Lane to the bottom of the drawing. It's about 260 feet away and from the terminus of Lake Road, it's about 150 feet to the west or the top of the drawing. The property is technically 129 feet wide at the required, at the setback where we measure it. And it's 345 feet deep. It's 39,593 square feet. It is located in the R3 zone. All the surrounding properties are in the R3 zone where 29,000 square feet is permitted. So this actually is an oversized lot. The, the applicants, Corey and Jason Wilf, are seeking to build a new, a new pool, house, pool. You can see sort of underneath there, there's an existing pool that's closer to the property line that they are removing and putting a new pool in that rather than being biased to the left property, that will be completely screened behind the existing house. They're also looking to make minor additions to the, make minor additions to the house to increase the functionality of the home. We actually worked with the, with Corey and Jason back in 2014 when they first bought the house, doing some minor grading work and repair the outdoor patio when they moved in. After living in the house for the past six to seven years, and as Corey indicated, as the family has grown, they've become acutely aware of the inefficiencies of the house layout of what was a spec house originally. And including that the house layout didn't really provide any proper support in terms of, for the pool, in terms of proximity of interior bathrooms, of the location of the covered patio. It was really an orphan pool and it was difficult to use. The, um, basically, as Corey indicated, we got involved again, this time with both John James as the architect and Brian Hirsch as the landscape architect. I'm always happy when we get the landscape architect involved early. And Brian, we worked on a number of homes that you'd never know Brian was there because you can't see the houses when Brian gets done. Can't see the backyard. You can't see the houses unless you're lucky enough to get invited to a backyard party. Normally get where you live right around the property, you never could see the, how beautiful and how dense and how lush Brian's work is. But Brian's part of the team. And Brian also assisted us in paring down some of the existing coverage to make sure that when, when all was said and done, we were fully conforming to the lock coverage. It was something that we were very firm about and the applicants were willing to work with us on. So it quickly became apparent that in order to realize the needed improvements, variance relief from the zoning ordinance, at least the strict application of the zoning ordinance would be required. And the, basically, we need variance relief from three areas. The first, and this is all actually shown in the zoning addendum that is part of the application on attachment E. And the first thing we need relief from is from the front setback. The, and this should permit the addition of the garage, of a garage addition. We're looking to go from two-car garage up to a three-car garage with some additional storage area for kids' play equipment, snow, snow blowers, et cetera. So really, for a home of this size and in this neighborhood, it's very unusual to have only a two-car garage. It's really inadequate for storage purposes, for getting cars in and out, as well as providing for the normal bicycles and play equipment that, that most families have these days. The, we also need a variance for building coverage. And that is to allow for these small little bump outs to improve the functionality of the home, which what John will talk about. It also improves the aesthetic of the home, which John will also talk about. And because there was really no way of getting programmatic elements to support the pool, we elected to do the next proposed one-story pool house at the back of the property. And that was done also for the purposes, we moved it to the back. So it would be really more analogous to the rear yard of the property that's at 38 Del, 39 Delwick, rather than in the side yard of the neighboring property at 28. So the pool is actually at the back corner of 28 Montview. And it sits at the very rear of the home on 39. A little later, when it comes back, actually, or maybe in a second, I'll show some aerial relief on there. The, so with regard to the extent of the variances, and for some reason I can't find my, my section E, but I'll just go over them. Instead of the variances for the front yard setback, 86, 86.11, no, I'm sorry, I'm going to flip back over here again. The, um, the existing setback to the home is 86.11 feet. We're looking at putting a garage addition on, which means we'll be left with 73.11 feet. We actually, with the adjournment from the last hearing, we're able, able to get out and survey one more home that we had estimated the setback. And we now find the, actually, the average setback is not 81.5 as we had indicated, but it's actually 80.4 feet from Montview. So 80.4 feet, we're proposing something at 73.11 with just that one-story portion of the garage. The other two flanking additions to the dining room and family room, and certainly the additions to the entry and the kitchen at the rear of the home are, and they're all one-story. They don't play any part of that. But the one-story garage addition does require variance relief. When you adjust for the numbers, get rid of the error, we need variance relief for 7.29 feet. And I would, I would argue that when you're close to 80 feet back from the street and you've got dense landscaping in front, that difference will be imperceivable. We also need a, a building coverage variance where the existing property is at 11.07%. That's 4,383 square feet. We are looking at adding 1,546 square feet. And that brings us up to 14.97 where 13% is permitted. So we're over by 782 square feet or 1.97% over what's permitted. I would also point out, and the architect will get into this, but of that overage of 782 square feet that we're over on building coverage, 600 square feet of that is in terms of covered porches and entryways, covered porches, all of which add shade to this property and they actually break down the mass of the property. So really, the amount of enclosed space that we're over by in terms of building coverage is only 182 square feet. And then finally, we need a variance for side yard combined. If you look closely, again, at the property, sorry, I lost it. If you look closely at the property, again, of this property, it gets progressively narrower as you move back. So the existing property, when you take the setback at the back left, back right corner, 15.61, and you take the offset at the front, which is buried here, but it's basically about 26.8, 26.68 feet. Those added together do not equal 35% of the lot width. And I'll get into that a little more in a second. So we need variance relief for 2.94 feet of combined side yard. But the area where adding the additions in the front, it's fully compliant. In fact, it exceeds the side yard requirements for the zone. So before I go, let's go to John, I do want to talk about some hardships that are inherent in both the property and lawfully existing structures thereon. One is the shape of the property. And so while technically we are over on our, our, we're, we're over on our required lot size, you see that the property goes from 133.5 at the street, at the 40-foot setback where we would measure lot width is 129.3 feet. When you get to the back, to the very, the back of the property, you're only at 96 feet width. So that narrowing of the property does create a hardship in adding to the house without the need for variance relief. This combined with the lawful, the location of the lawful, lawful existing structures on the properties, the fact that we're already too close, creates a practical difficulty in, in developing the property without the need for variance relief, as I indicated. The narrowing a lot by more than 32 feet towards the back really does mean, it also means that rather than doing side by side, it really forces a long linear development of the house with the pool. And that, and that, as John will discuss, actually leads to some inefficiencies in the slightly larger building coverage as well. The, um, the, I'm speaking faster than my notes go. The configuration of the exist, as John will also discuss, hardships can be created not only by the lawfully existing location of a house, but the physical layout of the house itself. If we're not going to tear this house down and do a brand-new teardown, and we're looking to basically make a spec house work better, both in terms of overall efficiency and better for a, a family with three children, there are certain inefficiencies with the existing structure. Some of the room sizes and layouts not meet the minimum sizes and standards you'd expect in this neighborhood and certainly in the R3 zone in general. And the applicant is planning on correcting these deficiencies in a minimal way. But they all have consequences on the first floor of the house and the grounds, which triggers the need for variance relief. The, I'm going to actually show one exhibit here before I turn it over to John. And the, um, this would be A1. It is marked aerial photo. The photo is taken from nearmap.com image with an image date of March 21st, 2001. It was prepared by my office on 4/19/2021. And what we've done is we've overlaid the lot configuration from the tax maps along with our proposed design over the existing neighborhood. And you'll see that, just to get back to that issue of the hardship that's created by the, by the front yard setback, what really, what really creates that is that we're really consistent with all the neighborhood, except we've got a couple of estate houses to our, to our, I forgot which way that is, to the east, that, that creates some deficiencies in the, in, in our meeting the front yard setback. If you look at the neighborhood, you'll see that the property at 47 Delwick, which is the Sanchez residence, formerly the Soren residence, that's got a setback to the Montview of 74 feet. The Cohen residence next door is 79. We're currently at 86.5 and we're proposing 73. So 73 versus 74 versus 79, they're really all in the same ballpark. It isn't till you get to the Santana property, the former Schiller property, where you have an offset of, of 126.5 feet through the woods. If you were to eliminate that front setback, we'd be fully compliant with our front yard setback for that proposed garage addition that we're adding to the front. If we look across the street in the neighborhood, you're also talking about 15, Montview has a setback of about 77 feet. The property at 25 has a setback of 69 feet directly across the street. It's actually to Lake Road, but it has a frontage along Montview that has a setback of 48 feet. So certainly, what we're, what we're proposing is consistent with the neighborhood. What skews it is the estate house to our left, to our right, as you're looking at the property, that has a large setback. They also have a large garage, this next door property. They also have a large cabana and pool. Their back property also has what was a tennis pavilion. It's actually a freestanding dwelling on the tennis. What we're doing really, part of this exhibit is to show that what we're doing is really not inconsistent with the neighborhood. And the placement of the structures is placed so as to have the least impact on any of the adjoining properties. Our pool is, is in a similar, somewhat analogous position to the pool at 28. The cabana moves back of the property, so it's the rear of the property at 39, which actually does have a large accessory structure in the back. To our left, there's a tennis court. A number of the houses in the area have pools with substantially sized cabanas that are really similar in size and scope to what we have planned for you this evening. So what I'd like to do now is actually.
Hey, Rich, Rich, can I interrupt you for a second? Just for clarification, for the record regarding A1.
Yep.
What, what, what is the date of that aerial photo?
The image date is March 21st of 2021.
2021, okay.
So it's very current. And we actually chose a winter date because we want to, I wanted to show the board exactly how dense the landscaping, both the evergreen landscaping that runs along the side and, and due to power lack use, a fair amount is, is actually on our property. But the, wanted the board to see that even in the winter, this is fairly screened. If I showed you a summer image, you would not see half the house. You wouldn't see, you wouldn't see half of the, you wouldn't see half of our house. You wouldn't see any of the front driveway. You wouldn't see the garage area. So we purposely chose the most recent winter cycle, which was just from this past March, to demonstrate how densely populated and how private this backyard is when you actually get back there. So what I'd like to do now is turn it over to John to speak about.
Wait a minute. Let's find out if there are any questions from board members or the public of this witness.
Yep. And I was just going to say, Brian will then talk about the other issues. And, and then I'll come back and talk about the planning concepts.
Well, I wanted to stop now because you've been talking for quite a while.
Yep.
Now, are there any questions from board members? Are there any questions from members of the public? Okay, proceed. Eileen, anyone have any questions?
No public, there are no, uh, no public questions.
Okay, proceed now.
Okay, I'm going to talk next about our design proposal for this project. And I'm going to share the screen and show you the drawings that.
Well, first of all, qualified.
Yes.
What is, what is your qualification?
I'm a registered architect in New York, New Jersey and Connecticut. A bachelor of architecture from University of Virginia and masters from Columbia University in New York City. I'm a principal on a seven-person architectural firm in Maplewood, New Jersey. Extensive experience in residential and historic structures. I've been working in this area for the past 27 to 30 years and have appeared before this board on numerous occasions. And all of my licenses are current and in effect.
Your qualifications as an architect are accepted by this board.
Thank you.
Proceed.
Okay, so I'm going to share my screen here and show you what we're proposing. As Rich showed on his site plan, there are a lot of areas within the existing house that need to just correct some of the deficiencies. This was originally built as a spec house. And some of the rooms and sizes or things just aren't sized the way you would normally expect in this area in the R3 zone and for a house of this caliber on this type of property. The first and foremost is the one we've been discussing is the garage. And we have what looks like an existing three-car garage because it has an oversized door, but it's not big enough to pull two cars in. The depth of the garage is below what we would do as a standard. So we're trying to add a third bay for this family for their cars. And we're doing that by building a 13-foot expansion off the front of the house towards the front yard. When we looked at the aerials of the existing properties around every property, but it conformed with essentially every property, but the estate property next door, which was the former Schiller house. It's a 13-foot wide bay and it will now allow them to park three cars in their garage. We have an existing dining room that's very narrow and close to the front of the stair. It doesn't allow them to have a table that actually seats their whole family. So we're proposing to do a small five-foot addition out off of the dining room to rectify that situation. Because it's a symmetrical center hall colonial house on the front, if we add something to the immediate left side of the door, we need to do the same thing on the right hand where the living room is. So in order to kind of maintain the architectural character of the house, we're extending that five-foot addition across the right-hand side of the house. It has no effect on the existing canopy and everything in the center. We're going to make some upgrades. We're going to make some upgrades to the balustrade and things like that. But all of the additions that I'm showing you for this house only affect the footprint on the first floor. And that's part of what happens, um, in terms of our building coverage for this project. But the reason that the floor area ratio is still well under the allowable is that we need these type of things on the first floor only. We're not trying to bulk up the house above it. Uh, but we're trying to add the areas where we have areas of concern and problems. Um, we're doing a small window well in the back, so there's actually an egress from the basement down below. Currently there, there's, there's no egress from the basement. Um, in the kitchen, we're doing a modest bump out here. And in the breakfast room, the breakfast room is bumping out a total of three feet so that we have enough room to swing the doors in and out next to the breakfast table. The kitchen's bumping out that same amount. It's going, um, four foot eight inches with a bay so that we have room for an island large enough with four stools. They have three kids. And, um, we're trying to expand the kitchen to accommodate that as well. Uh, both of these things are in the middle in the backyard. It's a one-story additional with a low roof over it. It really has absolutely no effect on the neighbors. Um, when you look at the second floor, we're not doing anything to the second floor. Uh, there are no proposed additions. And in the third floor, we're doing an interior renovation only at the top of the stair. And we're taking an existing study and we're turning it into a study guest room by adding a bathroom here so that it can be used for guests. And what we're doing is we're enlarging the windows within the footprint, uh, putting a location for a bed and adding a new, um, bathroom there so that this can be used as a guest room within the existing footprint of the house. You can see on the elevations at the front, we're redoing the front porch columns and the balustrade up above. Um, currently it's much, much higher. It's very overscaled. It has a lot of dentals and things like that. We're going to be taking off the decorative moldings that really aren't a part of the true character of this house. And we're going to be carrying across with some metal roofing here and on the new additions and on the new garage that will, um, weather to a dark brown, um, copper colored. And we will, um, have it fit in very carefully with the rest of the house in trying to minimize these additions. They will also be done in brick to match the rest of the house. And we're probably going to put a special finish on all of the brick for the house. On the side, we're going to go back and we're going to install carriage-style doors here. We're going to do a canopy with brackets that gives it a little bit more character, more of a carriage house vernacular. And you can see the one-story of the, um, garage addition in the front that stays there. It stays below the main windows on the front facade of the house. And it also stays below all the windows on the side. We're going to be adding two canopies on the side doors as well. And you can see where we're going to change to a triple window with egress up on the third floor as well. If we look at the back of the house, we're taking the existing covered porch and we're changing it from the two columns to back to a more classical railing here as well. We're going to be doing three bays, which is much more classical than having a single column in the middle. And again, you can see there was a small low roof that was here for the original kitchen, so we're bumping that out slightly along with the breakfast room at the back of the house, another four feet. And here, when you look at the opposite side of the house, you can see the balustrade that we're redoing. You can see the addition on the front of the house and you can see the garage there as well. Additionally, as Rich showed on his site plan, we're working on a pool house. And the pool house is being set way back on the property. It's back behind the existing next-door neighbor's rear property line. And it conforms, it's at the back of the rear property line of the neighborhood around the corner on Delwick. So it's a much more minimal location. Um, we're setting the pool back. Brian's going to talk about that. It's set back directly behind the house. And we've moved the carriage house here because we have a narrow lot. We have kind of a long um, carriage house that's stretched sideways on the lot. So it's actually the side of the carriage house, excuse me, of the pool house that faces the pool. And then the rest of the French doors face out to the large and long yard. Um, we're going to be, um, it has a main area, seating area. It has a bathroom, a laundry area. It has a small study and it has a stair to a basement. And in the basement, we're planning on putting the pool equipment. And we're going to have an area here that's going to be for storage of furniture or it could be a future kid's teenage game room or something like that. Um, this shows you the elevations for the carriage house. Um, we're, we're doing a one-story structure. We're going to have some cathedral ceilings in the main room. That's the Palladian window that will be on the interior of that with some beam ceilings. And the same thing on the side of the house, um, that faces the neighboring backyard. And then this is the facade with the French doors that faces out towards the pool here. And we have a potential for some arbors for additional shading if we want to do that. But we're trying to keep some open shaded areas within the pool house itself so that you can spend part-time in the shade and part-time in the summer, in the sun, excuse me. Some family members really like to be out in the sun and other family members really need to be in the shade. So we're trying to create both of those areas immediately adjacent to the pool so they can be used properly. Um, I did take a couple of photographs of the house. So you can kind of see, um, do you want me to, um, mark these as exhibit A1?
Ron? Yes, please.
Okay.
And, and, um, John, if you can just describe, are we doing these in a, in a pack of a-
A package of four photographs that just show the existing exterior conditions of the house.
And just describe the, the date that you took them and what they-
Um, this would have been taken last summer, um, um, when we did our field, um, visit for the property. And just shows what are the existing conditions of the property currently.
Is it A2?
A2, yeah.
A2. A1 is the aerial photo.
Yes, okay. So I, I just changed it A2 and it's four photographs. So you can see the front of the house here, how the balustrade is very, very large and you can't even see the Palladian window behind it. And this projects a couple of feet in front of the side so that our new addition here is just going to, is not even going to come out as far as the existing canopy. And then you can see here on the left-hand side where we're going to be putting the garage. But the garage is going to face to the side yard, so it's totally, um, to code. Um, and it's still seventy-one feet from the yard and there's dense screening all along here. Um, so it's really going to be a very minimal intervention on the front. We're going to get rid of the brackets and put a more classical and tableture across so that all of these match. When you look at the side of the house, you can see it's very blank. So we're going to be adding that roof over top of the carriage style doors here. We're going to be adding the entry canopies and we're going to be changing the window up on the third floor. In the back of the house, you can see again, the balustrade dominates the entire elevation. It's totally out of scale. We're going to be coming back, eliminating the column, going to three bays of columns to give it more of a classical feeling and doing a much more residentially scaled, um, railing for the roof up here. This is where you see the existing one-story roof at the kitchen. That's going to come out for the kitchen and bay window. And the breakfast room is going to come out to where the indentation is at the current brick wall there as well. Here you can see, the last photograph, you can see a detail of that. Otherwise, the overall scale and texture of the house is going to remain the same as it is. Um, and these are minor interventions in the overall property itself. Um, so we're adding to the house in these small ways. Um, the garage adds two hundred and eighty-one square feet. The dining room adds sixty-six square feet. The living room adds seventy-two square feet. Uh, the breakfast area in the kitchen adds sixty-seven and thirty-nine square feet respectively. Um, we're doing the new pool and pool house so we can have a motorized cover now on the pool for protection of their young kids. And so that we can have a pool house that's out there for supervision of them when they're having family activities around the, around the pool itself. Um, these are really minimal additions to this house, but all of them are one-story additions. Um, and we have problems in all of these rooms that we're trying to correct. Um, but that in terms of dealing with the, um, front yard setback variance, I think Rich has already talked about that, that the seventy-three point eleven feet that we're going to end up at instead of the eighty-three feet still conforms with all of the houses in the neighborhood, except the estate houses to the right of this house when looking at it from the street. Um, when we talk about the combined side yard setback variance, um, we still have the same conditions at the back of the house to the property lines as we do with the new work we're adding on to. But because of the angle to the front yard, if we were to take that line at the front yard where we're building the new garage addition, we actually conform with the setbacks there. But according to the zoning ordinance, we have to take the, the smallest portion of the lot, which is at the back and which is the narrowing of the lot. Um, because we have the longer and narrower lot, that's the reason we're doing things like stretching the pool in the long direction. And we're also turning the carriage house, excuse me, I keep saying carriage house. We're turning the pool house sideways so that it stretches long. This way it has less of an intervention on the yard and it kind of fits with the overall shape of the property. Um, in terms of dealing with the, um, building covered variance, the maximum allowable building coverage in the R three zone is thirteen percent of lot area. The relief, relief we're asking for is for seven hundred and eighty-two square feet or one point nine seven percent. And, um, as I was discussing with Rich earlier, six hundred square feet of that or seventy-seven percent of our overage is for the covered porches and the entry canopies that go around the house that provide shade for the existing house. But these aren't structures that create an overall bulk and volume on the main house itself. Um, we're not, really not trying to bulk up this house. We're simply trying to make modest improvements to the problematic areas. Um, if you look at the other metric for bulk on a property and for bulk of a house, it's the floor area ratio. And if you look at the floor area ratio for our house, you'll find that there's twenty-five percent allowable, but we're at twenty-two point three one percent. So we're a thousand and sixty-three square feet under the allowable floor area ratio, um, which is still much larger than the building coverage variance we're asking for. This is a situation where we're having to expand in a linear fashion on first floor of the house in all of the additions that we're doing. And we don't have an option for doing that higher and making it more compact. These flaws are all on the ground floor of the house. But I think that when you look at it compared to the overall floor area ratio, uh, metric, doing it this way decreases the bulk. Um, because we were over on the, um, building coverage of the property, we worked very carefully with the owners and with Brian Hirsch to reduce the lot coverage so that the lot coverage would be reduced and that our overall building and lot coverage would be conforming on the lot itself so that would not be overbuilt in terms of building and paid areas. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Brian and let him describe what he's been doing with the landscaping for this. Um, but I want to answer any questions there may be first.
Let's find out, is there any questions first from the audience, Eileen? Questions for the architect?
Um, I do have a, a hand raised by Jamie Ehrenfreed, so I will bring her over.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Let's have your full name, please, and your address.
Certainly. Jamie Ehrenfreed, eighty-seven Wellington Avenue, Short Hills. My questions, my questions or comments are, it seems like the house is now going to go really from, on paper at least, from a three-car garage to a four-car garage. And secondly, that although this setback, you know, they're saying it's within the range of the other houses variances that they've had, it is greater than any of those other houses, right? And so at what point does the committee finally say, you know, we have, we have a setback requirement? Let's enforce it. Um, you know, I, I mean, at what point do you say that's too close?
Let's ask, let's ask John James those questions.
Well, let me share my screen again. And the requirement in Short Hills is for a forty-foot setback or the average of houses within five hundred feet of your property. So our seventy-three point eleven feet setback is almost double what the normal range is in Short Hills. And as Rich testified earlier, we're next to a house next door that's a hundred and ten feet back and it totally skews the average here. Our setback is certainly consistent with the other two houses between it and, um, Delwick. And it is much greater than the houses across the street from it. The house across the street has a forty-eight foot setback. We're at seventy-three feet. Um, we have a heavily screened, uh, front yard with evergreen trees. Um, you're not even going to be able to see that we bumped this garage bay out. In the R three zone, we're allowed to do either a three or a four-car garage. And you cannot get two cars in this garage space here because the wall is too tight to the garage. Um, it may look like it's a three-car garage and they thought it was a three-car garage when they were buying it, but it's essentially a functional two-car garage. And we're adding an additional bay so that we can make it a three-car garage. But whether we call it a three or a four-car garage, it's totally allowed in this zone, but the function of it is going to be as a three-car garage.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Any other questions from members of the public?
I do not see any other hands raised.
Any, any questions from members of the board of this witness? The next witness.
My name is Brian Hirsch. I'm the landscape architect working for Cory and Jason.
Let's, let's have your qualifications, please.
Certainly. So, um, um, I went to Cornell University undergraduate degree. I got my BS in LA, um, back in two thousand and one. I worked in a couple of large firms in the city, working on parks like Brooklyn Bridge Park, um, the High Line and a couple of other, uh, larger projects. I worked for a small, uh, residential firm, uh, in Far Hills, New Jersey for about five years following that. And I went on my own, um, about eleven years ago. And I've, I've basically worked in, um, the Route eighty, Route seventy-eight corridor of New Jersey. I'm licensed in New York, New Jersey and several other states. Um, and I love working in Short Hills. Those are my calls.
Are your licenses in good standing?
Yes, they are.
Are there any questions from board members on qualifications? Proceed, Mr. Hirsch.
All right. So let me share a screen with you here. Are you guys able to see what I'm seeing here?
Yes.
We don't know what you're saying.
Okay. So let me give you an overview of the property, uh, just from a landscape perspective. Um, so we talk about outdoor rooms.
Mr. Hirsch, we don't, we don't have anything in front of us other than-
Yeah.
Yes, again?
That, that's better. If you can make that your, yeah, that's better. Um, can, before you start, is what you're showing us, um, what was already set forth in the application packet?
Yes, this is the same site plan overview that was put together and that was on the website, uh, prior to the meeting.
Thank you.
Yep. So what I wanted to walk you through here was just the, uh, the landscape as we see it from a landscape architecture perspective. Um, obviously we were just talking about the front yard setbacks. Um, and so part of what I'd like to share is that one of the first steps that we're looking at uh, when we're working on this project is that there are a lot of existing mature plant material. By mature, I mean they were either planted at the time of the initial construction and have had ten to twelve to fifteen years to mature, or they've been added by subsequent homeowners. Um, they are in and around the existing pool structures and around the foundation of the home. So one of the first things that we have done for the homeowner is to go and inventory the plant material that's there, that's worthwhile, and it would make sense to transplant, um, especially if it's going to be disrupted by the construction in the area of the pool and the pool house and of the construction- in the area of the pool and the pool house and of the construction corridor to get there. So part of what we've done is locate Norway spruce trees, cryptomaria, green giant arborvitae's that are in the eighteen to twenty-foot range of height that are being able to be transplanted. And one of the first things we would do is try to, we're showing this nice thick green buffer. These are the existing trees that are inside of this and basically I'm showing a little bit of a, you know, a cloud of what we would be trying to add in terms of thickening up the planting in the front. So a lot of that would be reliant on transplanting existing plant material from the rear to then create that buffer of what we're talking about, where the only views into the property are the actual driveway entrances at that point. So that would be one of the first things we do as you approach the house. Let me speak a little bit about how we got to locate the pool and the pool house in this sort of a fashion. You can see that one of the things we wanted to create and maintain was a large backyard and not completely bifurcate the space in the rear yard between, you know, the pool area and then the lawn. And this creates a rather sizable play area for their three children that is still adjacent to, you know, the outdoor spaces of the house. And one of the things that I think was shown on some of the architects' plans, when you have this large of a bump out that's coming off of the normal house line back here, there starts to be a, you know, an axial relationship that's formed between this space and placing the massing of the pool house opposite. And it creates a natural conversation between the new house that you're putting here and the existing facade of the house. And so along this line, not to get too, you know, axial in representation, a rectilinear pool makes a lot of sense between these two locations. And that obviously all conforms to the setbacks that we needed to to provide these elements around the pool. You know, speaking to what we're doing in terms of the pool code fencing and whatnot to kind of create a front yard and a backyard. Just to call your attention, the real pool code fence would be proposed from the rear yard here to the property line. And from this front facade of the house over the property line. It then continues all the way around the property, around the back and comes back to that same location. This is what is the pool code fence for the, for the rear yard. On top of that, we're also suggesting that we put in a fence that connects to this structure from the front corner of the pool house and over and back again to the property line. The reason for this is that with three small children, even though we have, you know, a pool fence that keeps neighbors and other people from coming into the rear yard. It gives them peace of mind to have a belt and suspenders type of situation where there isn't going to be one of their children coming into this by accident. We also talked about the fact that the the pool is going to have a retractable pool cover that, you know, basically for safety, covers the pool when it's not in use. So let me walk you through some of the elements that are around the pool itself that we've worked in. You have a twelve-foot setback to basically this line that we're talking about, keeping everything, all the development forward of that. So you have a dining patio, which is through a server, a pass-through counter from the kitchen, which leads to a grill area with a, you know, cooking serving counter where you have room for guests to to attend. We do have these shade structures, we talked about here off of the actual building and then potentially off to the side to create both shaded and full sun environments around the pool itself. The small fence that we're showing located around the pool is basically going to be masked with a hedge or with planting. And it won't be the same height as required by code because we're taking care of that code out front here. This might be shorter so that we maintain views out and across between the lawn spaces so that we're not cutting off and creating a yard that's bifurcated. Again, a lot, coming back to the front yard. One of the things that we're doing here is obviously adding some Belgium block aprons to the front yard. This here is creating an entrance courtyard to the house now that, you know, we're we're trying to create, you know, a formal symmetry along the center line. John spoke to this, what you do to the left, you have to do to the right. And we're creating more of a formal garden in this area for these living spaces to look out on. Right now, currently, the grade falls down very quickly. This allows you to come up into this space and you have an interior garden inside and around the house. Again, a lot of what we were trying to do was reduce a lot of the existing patio space and hardscaping that's on the property and really pull it down to bare bones to really just have it function and have more green space as opposed to paved areas. Leading around the house, we have a service walk which connects the front yard to the rear yard and allows for, you know, wheeled vehicles and service access to come to the rear. It also connects the covered patio. Coming around the other side of the house, which is the way that most, you know, guests would arrive. You have both of the two doors that lead to the house, but then you also have the walkway that leads you to the backyard. And then we're trying to simplify, currently there was a complicated upper patio, sunken patio, and then yet still a further sunken patio. We've basically removed this to just be connecting locks and using this as the new space that's going to, you know, function underneath the the existing cover. And then we're trying to bring again the green right up to the house itself, so this is planned to be a kitchen garden where the locks are more than likely, you know, lawn. And you're going to be able to come out and, you know, pick some fresh vegetables, it's full sun over here. I mean, that was another reason for setting the pool where we did. Given the orientation, this does get full sun and gets away from the large plant material, the green giant arborvitae's which run the length of the property line over here. Where I'm indicating across like this, I just suggest a large new plant material. So after this is the access road, we're basically going to plant our way out of here. So these might be, you know, eighteen to twenty-foot tall spruce trees. We want to maintain as much as possible the plantings along the perimeter. And if the plantings, you know, are found to be diseased or in poor care, obviously they want to be planted to you know, continue the privacy that exists on the property or extend it further than it exists currently. This is especially true, again, sometimes you wind up with situations where there's not a lot of creativity with the planting plan where you just have a hundred and ten or two hundred linear feet of the same plant, which becomes incredibly dull and doesn't lead to a lot of you know, interest inside of a neighborhood where you have very similar, you know, desires to create tall blockage on both sides of your adjacent lots. So what we're doing here is breaking that planting plan up, so you might have, again, these are not specified yet, but this might be a Norway spruce tree planting, which is much different in character than what we would plant here, which might be cryptomarias or green giants, which again is very different from what's going in here, which might be Nellie Stevens Hollies. There's just a different leaf texture, different colors, different, you know, characteristics, this is far shadier than what would this would tolerate. And moving to the, you know, the center rear portion of the yard. We have the lawn coming in and actually coming directly up to the pool house itself. This would be likely another shade structure, which allows you to have dining underneath and in the lawn as in addition to having an actual outdoor eating area around the pool itself. And the rear of the property just tries to integrate, there's an existing swim set for the children here. Where I'm showing a rough size and shape that's existing, but we're basically going to have a small set of walkways that goes around and connects here. And it's not fully developed yet, but I'm picturing this as like a more of a woodland walk and much more of a shade environment that's fully planted again. And so some of the transplants that we're talking about moving might be to create a very thick, you know, rear yard property vegetative border, which then allows for smaller planting material. And this could be a complete different variety of experiences as you go through the garden itself. This is very hot and in the open with a planted edge condition around the outside. This is obviously one outdoor room around the pool. This gives you the illusion of a lot more space where only, right now currently, it's just lawn. But this gives you the illusion of a lot more wandering space where this connects to a completely different part of your property. Let me just check my notes here. I mean, I, I think I've given, you know, an overview of what we're trying to do. I know circles on a page don't give justice of what an eighteen to a twenty-two foot tall, you know, tree planting looks like when it's installed in person. And I think even the homeowner who's lived here for a number of years is going to be surprised when we start pulling out some of the plant material that's here. Just how large that material looks when it's located in front of the new structure or it is an understory planting and infill in between the existing mature oak trees and other specimens that are out front here. You know, with that, I'd turn it back to you guys to try to address any questions.
Is there anyone in the audience who has a question of this witness?
I have a question.
Wait a minute, we're, we're now seeking to see if there are any questions from the audience.
There are none.
Steve, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted, if you could specifically talk about the, I saw three, you know, very large, beautiful old trees in the backyard on the far end of the swimming pool. What are the plans to preserve and or replace those trees?
So I think I, the three trees, which I believe you're talking about, there are three river birch that are in this location here.
Right.
So I, I'm, I'm not showing exactly where it is, there is a small patio that exists back here currently and there are river birch coming around here. So.
Let me interrupt you to say that if you want to see exactly where those three trees are, take a look at the variance application plot plan prepared by Casey and Keller. And you can see, right, where those trees are on where the proposed pool is being asked to be put. And I'll, I'll add to Steve Togler's question. Will you describe those three trees? Why are they coming down? Are they significant trees? How tall are they? And why do they need to come down?
So they're river birch trees, which were almost certainly planted as part of the the house planting, which, you know, someone else weigh in here, but my understanding it was done in the late nineties, early two thousands is when this house was originally put up. Is that correct?
Nineteen ninety-seven, I.
Okay, so those trees have been growing probably for thirty years, so they were probably put in as ten to twelve-foot, you know, river birch and have now, you know, gotten to be monsters at this point. We actually did look into transplanting them as part of what we could move. But they're, you know, they're outside of the sweet spot of what we can actually relocate. And I, I don't, I'm sorry to say, I can't say exactly where they are, but if they're inside the envelope of the building, there's not much that we can do, you know, in terms of trying to work around them or trying to work with them. I would say that, you know, it's a great example of how quickly trees, you know, can grow from ten to twelve-foot trees into large fifty to sixty-foot, you know, river birch. But if you look at them, we've actually worked with a tree expert. Some of them, you know, got badly damaged during Sandy, where you can see that there are very large, you know, trunks that have been cut back and there's just new growth coming out from them. There's nothing, you know, unhealthy about them, they are weak wooded tree and you wouldn't want them to be next to a permanent structure. They're better off in the middle of a yard as opposed to right next to the house. So, I mean, the short answer is, there are certainly trees that were planted within the last thirty years. They're not a climax species like an oak or a maple that would be ashamed to cut down at that size because they'd have another two or three hundred years left to go. Birch trees tend to be short-lived relatively, that they'll, they peak between years thirty to seventy and they probably will be dead by a hundred and ten. Whereas when you talk about a peak tree, you'll talk about oaks or maples that live three, four, or five hundred years. It's a different, you know, type of setup. So I would say, you know, to answer your question in terms of what we're looking to replace, this tree here might be a twenty-four to thirty-foot magnolia, which is already, you know, half the size of what one of these three trees was. And when you look at plantings like this and like this, this is actually three river birch, which we're going to be replanting to try to recover what we had lost here. I mean, I hope that answers your question.
So I just, I just want to, for the record, you're, you're talking to the town, the forester, you're in compliance with whatever regulations are required for removal of trees of a certain diameter and replacement of such trees?
Yeah, so just to be, yes, we are gonna, any tree that comes down is going to be, you know, and that needs permission, will be asked permission for. You know, I think the other reason to think about it, none of these trees, when you look at a river birch, they grow in clumps like multi-stem clusters. They don't grow like an oak tree with one solid diameter. So when you're looking at one tree, it's actually made up of four or five trees that might be six or seven inches in diameter. So, you know, you're looking at, you know, it looks like you're cutting down a forest if you're cutting down one tree when it has five or six, you know, diameter.
Let me be more specific than Steve Togler was.
Yep.
Have you discussed these three trees that are shown being taken down? Have you discussed that with the town forester?
So I have not discussed these three trees with Tom Doty. We do have, you know, Save-A-Tree, who is involved with the property. And we did look at them and what the ability would be to sell, you know, to save them or to transplant them. And I don't want to speak for, you know, somebody else, but the collective decision was that it was not worthwhile transplanting them and there wouldn't be a problem attaining permission to remove them.
Or you could turn the proposed one-story pool house sideways and save those trees without touching them.
So if we were dealing with like a significant tree that made sense to save, that couldn't be replaced in thirty years? Absolutely, but when you're dealing with, you know, a setup like this that was put in by, you know, a previous homeowner that is a short-lived tree that can be replaced, I would even say that these three trees that you're putting in up above, these, you're putting in eighteen to twenty-foot tall, you know, river birch. Within three to five years, they will be of, you know, they will, I don't want to say double, but they will be significantly larger than when they go in. So I think in over a ten-year horizon, you won't even know that they were gone. So because these.
From board members of this witness. Who's your next witness?
Thank you, let me stop sharing here.
Hi, it's Rich Keller, I'll do the planning testimony, I do want to add though, as is required, if this board were to approve this project, we cannot get building permits without a grading permit issued by the township engineer, engineering department. And we cannot get a building permit without a tree replacement plan, a fully conforming tree replacement plan. So this has an off, and it's not traditional that we run these plans by Mr. Doty in advance of a hearing. If this board were to approve the application based upon the merits of of the location, which I think the, the benefits will outweigh any detriments. We're required to replace trees and we have an ordinance for that that requires that. I've never worked on a project with, first of all, every project I've ever worked on, we've gotten a tree replacement permit where required. And almost every single one, we've exceeded the amount of plant material required. And every project I've worked with, with Brian, we've exceeded the required replacement trees by a factor of two, three, four, or five times. And certainly where six, eight-foot trees are required, or one and a half inch diameter trees are required, Brian routinely plants fifteen to twenty to thirty-foot tall trees that are much bigger in diamond caliber caliber. The combination of Brian Hirsch with Save-A-Tree is certainly well-known by Mr. Doty and we would have no, no, we would see no problem in getting a tree replacement permit. Including replacements, which will be specified by species and size. That would have to be approved by Tom Doty. And we'd also obviously have to provide a stormwater management plan, which is not shown on the application, but we couldn't get a building permit without. So those are, that would be, if this board approves us, we certainly are already required to get those two permits. With regard to the, the variance we requested, this, we see this as both primarily C one, but a combination of C one and C two. C one under municipal land use law. The municipal board is empowered to grant a variance when by reason of exceptional narrowness or shape of a piece of property or by reason of an extraordinary situation affecting a piece of property or the structures lawfully existing thereon. The strict application would result in a hardship on the developer's property. So a hardship can result as a, from both shape as well as the lawfully existing structures thereon. We have several hardships which Sean and I have alluded to and I'll go through briefly and then we'll talk about the the positive and the negative, or the negative criteria. In terms of the hardships that are inherent in the site, the existing deficiencies, there are existing deficiencies in several rooms within the home. The existing non-conforming house, location for the combined side yard setback. That's a function of the lot geometry, both the shape and narrowness of the lot, as is evidenced by the reduced lot width that gets thirty-eight feet narrow from front to back. The narrow, non-conforming property with the backyard, which requires new work to be stretched out along a linear fashion, which does create a slightly less efficient layout. But we think it's also the correct layout as indicated by both our architect and landscape architect. And again, with regard to the setback, the presence of adjoining state homes with very large setbacks, skews the average setback to a very large number. We think we're actually completely consistent with the properties that are across the street and and further to our further to the bottom of the page or the left towards, towards, towards Delwick. The, the project also advances a number of the purposes of zoning. General welfare is advanced with the elimination of non-conforming conditions, the existing pool patio is. Uh, general welfare is advanced with the elimination of non-conforming conditions. The existing pool patio, uh, is approximately eight point five feet off the line, where twelve feet is required. We're moving the, uh, that old walkways to be twelve feet off, and the pool is moving seven feet further away from the property than the existing one. Um, there are improved aesthetics as a result of the work that Sean's doing to the home, um, improving the façades, the, the, um, the look and appearance of the home, uh, in a unified manner. Um, and the, uh, we think that the placement of the pool, um, even though it does remove the, uh, require the, uh, the removal of three trees, the placement of the pool and the pool house actually preserves the air light milking space for the neighbors, uh, to our left and to the rear of the property. Um, with any variance, we need to demonstrate that there's the, we meet the negative criteria, and that's in two forms. First is that there's no substantial detriment to the public good, and secondly, that there's no substantial impairment to the intent purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. We think there is no detriment to the public good. Uh, the mitigating circumstances in support of that is that the applicant is proposing to remove considerable amounts of existing occupancy area to ensure that we're complying with the overall and previous coverage. Uh, that includes reductions to the driveway and walks and the installation of a, of a completely new pool. There are very mature evergreen trees along all the property lines that will completely screen and conceal uh, the new work from the street and the adjacent neighbors, and that'll be supplemented as indicated by, by our landscape architect. Uh, and again, we will need a development, uh, permit and a grading permit and a tree removal permit if this board would approve this. The new pool and pool house are setback further from the existing property, as indicated. That eliminates a non-conforming side yard condition. The pool, at least the proposed pool, the water surface is now completely behind the house rather than sticking out and biasing towards the left property line. The pool house is located, uh, further back on the property, so it backs up to the adjacent properties, the rear and the rear yard of the next property, uh, back to the left. The new pool equipment will be placed indoors rather than out in the open, um, making it quieter, um, for the neighborhood. Um, while we're asking for an increase in the building coverage, as indicated by John James, all of the additions are one-story. Uh, so it really doesn't affect the mass of the, of the project. And as indicated, while we're still under on, we are still under a lot coverage, accessory coverage, and rear yard unoccupied. So certainly, this is not an overdevelopment of the rear yard. Accessory coverage is met and rear yard unoccupied is met, and that's a unique order, uh, uh, criteria in Millburn, where we're required to have twenty-five percent of the total lot area behind the house with nothing in it, and ensures that, uh, the backyards don't get overdeveloped. And even with the coverage deviation, the site is still well under the FAR, um, permitted for the zone. FAR is the metric that we use, uh, to, to limit both intensity of use and the mass of the house. And we are fully compliant, uh, as John indicated, we're actually under by over a thousand square feet. Um, of the building coverage deviation of seven hundred eighty-two square feet, six hundred of that is in covered porches and entries that provide shade around the house. Uh, there are open structures that don't contribute to the overall bulk and mass of the house, actually break down the mass of the house. Our expansions to the front of the house are completely screened from the street, and they'll continue to be screened because as we move plant material and, and we reinforce that front planting, um, as, as indicated, that the applicant and Brian's goal is to make it so the only way you can see into the property is by looking down the driveways once the planting plans are complete. The, um, we think that, uh, we are consistent with the setbacks, um, of the adjacent properties. It's only the adjacent estate property that skews the average. With the dense landscaping and setback of more than eighty feet from the traveled way, I think no one will perceive of the front yard setback variance. Uh, we think the improvements that we are proposing are consistent with the established character of the neighborhood, and the application will neither cause a substantial detriment to the public good nor a substantial, uh, impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. We think our proposal advances the purposes of the zone plan and benefits. Um, the benefits of the construction of the new additions and the proposed locations will substantially outweigh any detriment. The new designs have been very carefully crafted over a long period of time with this, with this team. Uh, so the new work will blend in and improve the overall aesthetic appeal of, uh, and the details of the existing homes. For these reasons, um, based upon the drawings submitted and the testimony provided by the team, we're requesting approval for the proposed variance, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Well, I mean, is there anyone in the audience who has a question of this witness?
No.
Are there any board members who have questions of this witness?
I do.
Go ahead.
Rich, I just want to make sure I understand. Is it the front yard setback, is that the only variance that applies to the new garage?
No, the garage technically, we have an existing non-conforming setback as to the combined side yard setback. When you add the setback of the new garage at twenty-seven point two-six feet to that back right setback of fifteen point six-one, they don't equal the required thirty-five percent of lot width. I would point out, um, however, that if you add the front setbacks of twenty-seven point two-six at the front of the house with the front offset of nineteen, of, uh, of, uh, fifteen, nineteen point four-seven, so from the appearance of the street, you actually do fully meet the combined side yard setback. It's just, it's an existing non-conforming condition. I'm kind of saying it, it's created by the back right corner of the house, which is not changing. Um, the, uh, the garage does necessitate two variances. One is for the front, the, uh, average front yard, and the other is for the combined side yard. And I think both of those, um, are imperceivable from the street, even if you could see the house.
Okay, thank you.
And the other questions of this witness? I'll terminate the questions at this point and open it up to the board members for their comments.
Yeah, where you going?
Do you want to open up to the public?
Yes, let's ask it. Let's ask if there's anyone in the public who has a comment they would like to make.
No hands.
Okay, board members, your comments. Let me just get started. I want to get back to those three trees. Um, I am not a tree expert. And I heard lots of talk about tree replacements. But it seems to me that if I, someone a lot more, with a lot more expertise than I, needs to look at this to determine whether in fact those are river birches, how tall they are, whether they can be saved, whether they're worth saving. And, uh, if Keller kept talking about tree replacement permits, I'm not at the replacement point yet. I think that we need to get the, uh, town forester to look at those trees and determine whether or not they should be destroyed. So I'm not happy with this application at this point. Anyone else?
I guess I would, uh, I would add that, uh, I'm not really, I mean, there, there are some hardships related to the property, uh, the narrowing in the back. So I can appreciate the positioning of the pool house, notwithstanding the point you've made about the trees, Joe. That's, I, I, I put that in reserve, but I'm not really convinced about the need for the front yard setback. Um, so I would actually ask if possible that we could vote for the front yard setback variance that, uh, uh, from the other two.
That's fine. Front yard setback, is there a motion on that, on that setback?
Oh, is, is there any, any other discussion, I think, before we, we move to motions?
Oh, in general, I would be supportive of this application. I'm still not completely sold on the front yard setback. Um, you know, as for the trees, I would defer to the town forester, uh, as to whether or not they can, should, or otherwise remain.
Anyone else?
With respect to the front yard setback, you know, having taken a look a couple of times at the house and thinking about it, I, it's hard to imagine that it's going to be that perceptible. You know, the difference in the setback, especially with the, um, you know, with the plantings that are toward the front of the road, uh, near the road there. I understand what the concerns are, but at the same time, I guess the adding the garage to a house this size to a property like this doesn't make sense in my mind. And I'm just not sure that the, uh, reduced setback is going to be, yeah, that noticeable.
I'm sorry, Wolfgang. Did you say it does or does not make sense?
Uh, it does. Sorry, I didn't. I'm going to skip close to the microphone. I think adding garage space to a house like this does make sense in this neighborhood. And I don't think that the, um, I don't think that the change in setback is going to be that perceptible.
On the front yard setback, is there a motion?
So we're going to a vote right now? Hold on.
I'm sorry, Eileen, what was that?
I know we were going to a vote.
Well, I wanted to see if there's a motion first.
I move approval of the front yard setback.
Is there a second? Once again, is there a second on the front yard setback? Let's put this one aside. Now we have two more variances that are requested by the applicant.
Well, the combined side yard is, it's also correct, it's caused by the garage as well as the frame, so.
Yeah, but it's, it's not exclusively caused by the garage, right?
It's not changed by the garage, is it? I don't believe so. I mean, it's caused by the garage, but it's, but adding or not adding to the garage doesn't change that.
Yeah, I, I, I believe the testimony was that the, the proposed additions comply with the individual side yard setback requirements, and that the, uh, existing house is not conforming for the minimum combined side yard setbacks.
Correct.
Was your pleasure on the motions. The front yard setback motion was made, but it fails for lack of a second.
Right, the, the board may want to, um, handle these, these variances individually based on the discussion.
Well, that's what we started to do.
Right. I'm, I'm saying instead of combining the combined side yard variance and the building coverage variance, you may want to take separate votes for each of the three variances. Unless the, unless the applicant, the applicant's team, uh, based on the discussion amongst the board, you know, wants to say anything in terms of modifications or otherwise.
Or for that matter, the applicant could take an adjournment. I think there's only one more meeting in, uh, July, in June, but I think that one is already booked. Isn't it, Eileen?
I think, John, did you have your hand raised?
Yeah, I'd just like to be able to talk to my team members for just two minutes, um, to come back to you.
That's fine.
Well, on, on Mr. Simon's question.
Do, do, do you want to, um, Mr. Chairman, maybe it's advisable, it's nine oh seven right now. Do you want to take maybe a, uh, eight-minute break?
We can do that.
Come back at nine fifteen?
Great. I think that sounds good.
Eileen, how do we do that with Zoom?
Just mute yourself.
You can do it.
No, you can mute yourself.
I'm not sure I know how how do I, Jason, how do I get out of this meeting for the moment?
For the moment?
Yeah, they're taking a break.
I, 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 I have, I have no idea.
I don't either.
Uh, click on your, click on your face and see what happens. No, don't, don't click on anything. You want to see a full view? You want it to, you want it to occupy the whole screen?
They're apparently talking among themselves. This, this, this person, this person, this person.
I got, I got, I got, I got.
And these two people are all speaking to one another. I, I don't, I don't know how to get back into the meeting when it's ready.
Joe, all you have to do is the bottom left, uh, bottom left of your screen, just mute yourself if you want. You don't, if you don't want to turn your video off, just mute yourself until we come back.
Okay, I'm muted, right?
No, you're not.
No?
Okay, I just muted you. So you're good for, for now. I'll unmute you when we come back. You're good, Joe.
Can you hear me now?
Hey, Joe, you, you may, you may want to, as everyone's coming back, I typically like to have the board take a roll call. When we take a break, just to make sure for the record, everyone knows that everyone's back.
Everyone's back, yeah. Good idea. I don't see Eileen here.
I'm here.
I can't see you.
Yeah, I just haven't turned my video on yet.
Oh, yeah. Oh, there you are. Rich Scheller is not back.
They're not back yet.
Rick, is your group ready to go?
Are we still waiting for Steve Togger?
We're waiting for John James.
There he is.
Right, Eileen, Rob has suggested that we take a roll call, a roll call to make sure everybody's here.
Craig Clutner? Jody Sharp?
Here.
Joyce Stevel?
Here.
Steve Togger?
Here.
Tang Taurus?
Here.
Shandru Harjani?
Here.
Joseph Steinberg?
Here.
All right, John James? Is your group, what, what does your group want to do?
Actually, I think John is on the phone with Cory. We lost them, but, um, we feel as though we'd like to have the opportunity to interface with, uh, with the forester, um, and our own tree expert. And bring back some additional information as to the front yard setbacks. Because I think that, uh, I think that we can demonstrate that, uh, those trees can be removed by the forester with, with a permit. And our tree expert will indicate what condition they're in and why removal may be justified. So we'd like to have that opportunity since I know a number of the board members are concerned about the location. And I think also if we, uh, if we do our homework and provide some perspectives, perhaps, um, we can demonstrate, I think, as Mr. Tsitsora said, the front yard deviation is going to be imperceptible from the street, but we'd like to have the opportunity to, to punch up the, uh, those points.
All right, Eileen, do we have a date when they can come back?
Um. Approximately, how much time do you think, I mean, only because I just had the cell tower backed out of June 21st, so. And the other applications that are on are relatively minor applications.
Did you say they backed out?
Well, they're, they're asking for an adjournment.
We'd prefer to be back at the soonest meeting if possible.
I mean, I, I don't anticipate we need much more testimony from this applicant. I, I think we've gone through it all. It might only take, you know, their presentation, 15, 20 minutes, I think, maybe.
I think maybe.
On June 21st.
Yeah, and, and Mr., just to be clear that, uh, to the public, that it sounds from what Mr. Keller just discussed, that any additional exhibits or presentation that may be made by the applicant would be by way of exhibits that do not necessarily need to be in 10 days prior to the hearing. So as long as that they're available at some point prior to the hearing so that they can be shared, uh, on, you know, the website and for members of the public.
That's fine. So we're, let's just announce that this matter will be carried until a meeting of June 21st on a Zoom meeting of this zoning board of adjustment.
And that no further, no further notice will be required.
No further notice or, or publication needs to be made by the applicant. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now let's move to the next case, which is, which is Sanjeev Vinnyak.
All right, give me one second to, um, get these people out and John James. One, two, three, four, five, six. Wait, I lost somebody.
Yeah, Jessica is not here.
No, I lost somebody else. Who did I lose? I lost... Did I lose Craig?
Yeah, Craig's not there. And Jess, and Jessica's not there.
Okay, now we're going to bring Jessica back over.
And there's Craig.
I'm back.
No, it's not him. Hold on.
Okay, now we have Rob.
Wait, I got, I got the wrong person over here. I need Jessica flat. There she is.
Okay, the next matter.
Hold on. They keep jumping around on me. Sorry, Jessica. All right. Now I've got everybody else. Oh my goodness, sorry about that, Jessica.
No problem.
Oh, okay, here we are. I think I have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Yes, eight people. Okay.
Okay, is Sanjeev Vinnyak available?
No.
There he is. Right. I want to make a quick statement before the Vinnyak case is heard. I know that among the other members of the board, there's at least one attorney and a number of you think you are attorneys or would like to be attorneys or feel as if you think like attorneys. So I wanted to be clear before this case was heard as to whether the Sanjeev Vinnyak case could even be heard by this board. So I contacted our attorney, Rob Simon, who advised me that the answer to that question was yes. Even though Mr. Vinnyak is a newly elected member of the township committee, the organization that, um, is responsible for appointing people to the zoning board. And, uh, Rob asked me to take a look at a case, which I was somewhat familiar with anyway. And the case was even more pronounced than the Vinnyak case. Meaning it was a planning board case where the mayor of the town sat on the planning board and had a matter involving his own property that he wanted to bring before the planning board. And the question was, could he? The lower courts all said no. He could not. Conflict of interest. Case went to the New Jersey Supreme Court. Split decision, but by a split decision, the court reversed the lower courts and said, yes, the applicant can be heard. And, uh, in part, I think that the reasoning of the court revolves around the fact that service on boards such as a zoning board and a planning board are very taxing on individuals. And the courts felt that they didn't want, I think, to impose a certain restriction on the board that might cause people not to want to serve. So the answer is that Mr. Vinnyak is in fact permitted to bring his matter before the board, and he has done so. And the board is aware that he needs one variance, which is a front yard variance relating to accessory uses. And we'll talk about that after the case has been presented. Mr. Vinnyak, would you like to be in?
Thank you, Chairperson.
Wait, wait, let, let me, wait, wait, hold on, let me swear you in.
You have to be sworn.
Let me swear, swear, when, if, who's ever going to testify, just raise your right hand, please. Do you swear from the testimony about to give in tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Your names for the record, please, spell your names.
Sharon Minak.
And Sanjeev and I, we are at Two Rippling Brook Drive, Short Hills, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Proceed.
First of all, thank you for the opportunity and thank you all for serving on this board. And in all transparency, I'm also on the planning board, uh, not just on the TC. So I'm here to pursue or to at least put my case up front to you all. So good evening. My name is Sanjeev and I, and this is my wife, Sharon. We live at Two Rippling Brook Drive, which is a corner property on Rippling Brook and White Oak Ridge Road. We are looking to build a small patio in our backyard and are presently applying for the 609.580 feet accessory use variance. The patio we want to build is a quarter circle with a 21 feet radius. It is not a big patio and a very simple project. Our reason for wanting to put this in place is because we have keen children and we really just want them to have a place where they can sit and catch up when they have their friends over as opposed to putting chairs in the yard all the time and constantly ruin the grass. And also in full transparency, we have a deck, but it's at a higher level, at a main level. So when kids come in and play in the backyard, that's when they actually do not want to sit at the deck because it opens up right in our family room and there is no curtains there. It is just the way it has been made. So the patio will face our backyard and will be attached to our house on the back towards the White Oak Ridge. We have the reservation right of, of White Oak on one side of us and there are residences, uh, there are no residences there. We also have a tree line on that side of the property, which are over 15, in fact, almost 20 feet tall. So it'll be, it will not be visible from White Oak in any way. On the other side of the patio will be a deck which is higher, so it is at the same level as our main house. And it'll hide a patio from a neighboring house on Rippling Brook Drive as well. There is no way this patio could be an inconvenience to anyone nor an eyesore from the road. We would like to show you some photos, uh, that were also in the application package and request you all to please consider our application. If you're okay, I would like to share my screen, please. Am I good to share?
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. And... So this is a front of the house and all these images, all these pictures are on the application except this one. So this is a presentation of 10 slides. Uh, if you want to mark it as A1.
Yeah, so, so let me just ask for, for clarification. I know there's a number of colored photographs that were submitted with the application packet. Other than the one that you're showing right now, are there any others that the board has not seen yet?
They are all on the package except this one.
Except this one. Okay, so why don't we mark this one photo, A1? And if you could just identify who took the photo, when it was taken, and what it depicts?
So I took this photo on, uh, sometime in April, about, I think, 15th of April. It is the front of the house from Rippling Brook Drive. And if you see my pencil, this is the driveway which is coming from White Oak Ridge Road on the right side. Come in and it goes in front of my house and get out towards the Rippling Brook Drive. The deck that we are talking about is behind the house on this side of the house, which is closer to White Oak Ridge Road. Is that good explanation or do you need more?
That was excellent.
Okay.
And, and, and I, I would just ask that at the end of the presentation, if you can provide A1 to Eileen, please.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Simon.
Yes, of course.
So I'm going to start with the first slide where I'm going to show you around my house, 200 feet, what all houses are there and what does it look like, which as I said, you also have it on your package. So this is overall, uh, right here is our house and I'm going to erase whatever I'm making so we don't need to, uh, make this as a new slide. A little bit of auto planning board.
I, I was going to say, you sound like a veteran.
Okay, so this is the house and this is White Oak Ridge Road. And this is right here is Rippling Brook. And this is White Oak right here. If you see this side, these are all greens, some part of it is in town of Livingston and some part of it is in town of Melbourne. But there is nothing here, no residences here. So on the White Oak Ridge Road, we have three residences that are between the 200 feet. Then there is, this is a Clive Hill Road, so back of that couple of houses are also within the 200 feet. And these are the houses. And then after this is the South Orange Avenue. So I will go on to the second slide, which is much closer look. So this is the house we are at. And this, this is White Oak and this is Rippling Brook. And this is where in the back, right here somewhere where we are making the patio, I'll show you even further. This is the survey of the house. I've kept it this way so it is in line with what we saw earlier. This is White Oak Ridge Road on this side and this is the Rippling Brook Drive. House front is right here on the Rippling Brook, but we have a garage or driveway right from White Oak Ridge Road. This is the back of the house right here and this is the already deck that is in place. The patio that we are making is right here, which is 21 feet from this side and 21 feet from this side. So it's like a quarter of a circle. So that's, that's what it is about probably 300 to 400 square feet. It could be a little bit up or down than that. We are absolutely clear on everything else except we have 80 feet variance or 80 feet accessory use from this side of the road, which if it comes all the way here, this is where we can actually make the accessory and it needs to be 12 feet from this property line. So it is just this part that we really could do anything. So this is a hardship and this is what we are actually trying to do. We are, it's just, as I said, it's a small project. We're going to get basic papers from Home Depot and get that done here. And just to show you a little bit more about the house, this part which is the backyard, since you have already seen the front of the house, this is the back of the house if I'm looking from White Oak Ridge, but still standing inside my backyard. So this is the area that I was talking about where the patio will go. Now, just some more pictures of what we have around the house. This is my driveway from White Oak Ridge Road. And this is the backyard and this is where you see the tree line. Privacy plant, which when we put about seven years ago, it was only six feet. Now it's more close to 15 to 20 feet. We have fence around the house here as well as also on this side. If you see it here, it's not clearly seen, but it's inside the tree line. And so now this is a photo which is partly from the driveway, but where the tree line and the fence starts. This is White Oak Ridge Road and I'm standing on the reservation side and this is the house where nothing is visible or perforation, if you may, which you can see in the backyard. So this is how we can't even see the deck here. So patio is at the first level. Now, this is from inside the house, more close to deck. So this is the tree line that we are looking at. We have this fence here. And then we have a higher fence on the other side and behind these three, or not behind, opposite these trees. Again, this is from inside. This is the driveway right here from White Oak. And these are just few pictures for you guys to see. And thank you so much. There were few commissioners who have come and taken a look in my backyard, including the chairman. So thank you again. This is all we are here for.
Is there anyone on the, in the audience who would like to ask Sanjeev any questions? Eileen?
Or Sharon?
There are no hands raised, though.
Is there anyone on the board who has a question of the witness?
Can I, can I just ask clarification question? Chairman, just to confirm, have you heard anything from your neighbors since you sent the notice out? Asking questions or otherwise having concerns about the application?
We have, we have beautiful neighbors, good relationship with them. No one has asked any questions. We haven't heard from them. We have sent mailers, certified mail to all, not only to Melbourne resident, but also whatever addresses we got, there was no residences in Livingston. But we send letters to the utilities companies and Township of Livingston and some other companies that they asked us to. But haven't heard from anyone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone on the board have any questions of this witness?
Can he stop sharing?
So I do.
Yes, Steve.
Could you please tell us what the patio material is going to be?
As I mentioned, this was the basic papers that we are going to get from Home Depot. There is no special materials we are looking into. We have gotten the landscaper who came in and who has shown me. I have taken the picture. If you'd like to see it, I can actually bring it on the screen by moving it from my phone into the computer and I can show that to you.
He brought us basic concrete papers from Home Depot and Lowe's. We're not looking to do anything extravagant or whatever is best value for money and.
That's fine. And I really like us being called commissioners. Could we make that official, Joe?
You have titled better than that already, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions?
Look, look, I thought this was a fantastic presentation, very simple with pictures all around as if I was actually walking in the backyard. The fact that it is attached to the property, it's really at the corner, right between the deck and sticking to the sidewall with practically no residences around that would be visible from. In fact, the deck seemed to be much higher than the pavers. I think this is much, you know, at the ground level. I think it makes, makes me feel comfortable given all the tree coverage around as well as the deck surrounding it with, with no disturbance to the neighbors. I think it seems to be a very innocuous addition from my perspective.
Thank you. Any other comments from board members? Is there a motion in this case? Yes, Joy.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Jody, I think Jody.
That's okay. That's a good Joe. I was just going to say second, but that's okay.
Craig Klattner?
Yes.
Jody Sharma?
Yes.
Joyce Segal?
Yes.
Steve Togger?
Yes.
Wolfgang Torres?
Yes.
Jessica Platt?
Yes.
Joseph Steinberg?
Yes. Now, before we continue, I just have a quick comment. The board is required every year to file with the Township Committee a report of what we did during the year and or any thoughts we have. And I want to read to you, I don't know, this report might have been from 2016, 2017, somewhere around there. Quote, "It has also been suggested that the planning board and the Township Committee should revisit the accessory structure provision relating to corner lots. The special required setback provision relating to accessory structures has spawned many applications over the years. Some applicants have demonstrated that the provision, if applied to their property, would result in accessory structures which should never be permitted even without the need for a variance because the special setback provision would place the structure on a neighbor's property." I want to point out to you that we are talking about Section 609.5 of the zoning ordinances of Melbourne. We have, we as a board have complained about that on numerous occasions in our, in our annual report. This is a provision that the board came up, the council came up with, Township Committee came up with, I want to say 10, 15 years ago, that accessory structures on a corner lot shall be no closer than 80 feet to the front lot lines. And because this is a corner property, there are two lot lines with 80 feet configured from each sideline. Almost every accessory structure would then, on a corner lot would require a variance. The Township Committee has seemed to do nothing about this despite the fact that the zoning board has on many occasions complained about this particular provision. I don't know what the solution is, but I'm not a planner. And they haven't, the Township Committee has not turned this over. Maybe, maybe on one occasion, they did ask the Township Planner to take a look at our report to see what could be done. Nothing could, nothing has been done. This provision remains in effect. 80 feet from each front property line for accessory structures. There's got to be a better way to control accessory structures on a corner property than this way. And I'm hoping that the Township Committee will see fit to have their Township Planner come up with something that ameliorates the fact that we have as a board received many, many applications over the course of the 17 years or so that I've been on the board. And I know that those of you who have been on this board for a long time and many of you have been here for a very long time have seen applications such as this. So let's hope that this is the last one of these applications that we have to vote on. Anyway, we're now going to move to the last matter of the night, which is the application of Bacconie South, which is represented by a law, the law firm of Noel, PA. Can we have the applicant appear by counsel in this matter? Mr. Sukis.
Good evening, Mr. Steinberg. How are you?
How are you?
Very well, thanks.
Mr. Sukis, I don't know who else do I need to bring over at this point?
Right now, well, we're going to, we'll have Rich Keller, of course.
John Barry?
All right. John Barry, that's right. And Silvio Caruso. Also, I believe that Bruce Jeffries should be around as the owner of the property. I don't necessarily expect to call him for any testimony, but as the owner, I thought it was important that he be here.
I am looking, oh, I have Lori Caruso. Is that?
Yes, that's Mr. Caruso's wife.
Okay, counsel, who is your first witness?
Good evening, Mr. Steinberg. I did have an opening statement, but we are running late in the night, so I don't know how your reporter would like to do it. I saw earlier in the day that they.
You may certainly, you may certainly start with an opening statement.
Thank you very much. Good evening, board members. My name is William Sukis. I'm with the law firm Noel, PA in Hackensack, New Jersey. I represent Bacconie South LLC, who has submitted an application with respect to the real property located at Block 1707 Lot 2, also known as 519 Melbourne Avenue. Bacconie South is a tenant at the property and has operated an Italian restaurant by the same name there for a little over a year now. Property is located in a B3 neighborhood business zone where restaurants are permitted as conditional uses. Bacconie South seeks the following relief from these zoning ordinance this evening. Conditional use permit under Section 407 of variance from Section 606.6 for relief from the 125 foot setback requirements, a parking variance for 16 spaces based on occupancy of 48, okay, where there are no parking spaces on the site, and a variance from the loading spaces requirement, which requires one space, whereas none exist at the building. Bacconie seeks the relief, obviously, to allow it to continue its business as an Italian restaurant in that zone. Under Section 606.61, the purpose of the neighborhood business B3 zone is to provide for small scale commercial activities, serving the needs of residents of the surrounding areas. And I respectfully submit to this board, that is precisely what Bacconie South is seeking to accomplish here. The use as a restaurant is consistent with the historical use of the property, which for decades has been that of a restaurant. Most recently, in fact, the property was used for a number of years by a restaurant known as Tilly's. And before Tilly's, the property was used by a restaurant known as the Glenwood Cafe. These restaurants operated the property for many years. We will show, however, that at least with respect to Tilly, a conditional use permit was never obtained or issued. Construction permits were issued, however, to Tilly's, notwithstanding the lack of that permit. We thought that that fact was important for our purposes and we'll discuss it more through some testimony and documentation as we go on. Bacconie South proposes to use the property as is. No demolition is being performed, no construction is being proposed. Bacconie South is mindful of the importance of being a good neighbor in the community and in this zone in particular. Okay, as a matter of fact, it has taken steps to reflect its appreciation of the good neighbor policy. It's taken steps to keep the area behind the restaurant clean and free of refuse. And that area borders on the resident, on a residential property. It's taken steps to eliminate noises and odors emanating from the kitchen by keeping the door closed as a matter of policy and eliminating music from being played in the kitchen. It hired, Bacconie hired Travel Hood and Duck LLC to redirect the exhaust and airflow from the kitchen exhaust on the roof, okay, away from the residential area. It also provided screening for additional blocking of any odors from the exhaust to avoid going to the, to the nearby residences. Bacconie has a state of the art fire suppression system and hood, which in fact was installed while Tilly's was on the site. Okay, and, and as far as parking is concerned, we do note that there are six employees during any given shift at Bacconie requiring the use of two cars to get to and from work. This evening, we intend to provide you with sufficient proofs to establish Bacconie South's entitlement to a conditional use variance consistent with the Supreme Court decision in Coventry Square versus Westwood Zoning Board of Adjustment, as your counsel will counsel you, of course, where it was held that the applicant must prove that the site will accommodate the problems associated with the use, even though the proposal does not comply with the conditions established by the ordinance. Additionally, we intend to provide proofs to justify the grant of parking and loading spaces variances under either the C1 hardship analysis or the C2 zoning benefits slash detriments analysis. This weekend, this evening, we have two witnesses. And we will ask the board to accept Rich Keller, engineer of Casey and Keller. And we will ask the board to accept Rich Keller, engineer of Casey and Keller as an expert in the field of engineering, and we'll ask. That the board accept John Barry as an expert in the field of municipal planning to provide testimony in their respective fields. We do have. Mr. Silvio Caruso as well this evening, the owner of the Coney South LLC. With. We do intend to hold Mr. Caruso in reserve in the event the board has any specific questions regarding the restaurant that they seek to have answered that are. That may not be answered in the course of the, the other testimony this evening. And if the board has no further questions of me, Mr. President, I'd like to proceed with our witnesses.
You may.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask a clarification question for Bill, just because I think it'll make it easier as we proceed? So Bill, you mentioned that they could for Tilly's that the conditional use permit was, was not obtained. Is that? Your way of saying that this is, this does not qualify as a preexisting nonconforming use?
I, we're not seeking approval as a preexisting nonconforming use. We are, we are raising that issue to show that in the past, the treatment of. This particular property is not necessarily necessitated, necessitated or received a conditional use permit, although the zoning ordinance. Seems to clearly require that type of, that type of approval.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Okay.
Proceed with your first witness.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. I'd like. Rich Keller, please.
Do you swear from testimony about to give in tonight, sharing be the truth, whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name?
Sure, Richard Keller with Casey and Keller. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. I have been licensed as an engineer since nineteen eighty nine. I hold a bachelor of science in civil engineering with a concentration in water resources and environmental engineering. I've appeared before this board as little as a half hour ago. As well as about a hundred and ten boards throughout the state of New Jersey. My, I've also provide engineering guidance to the township of Long Hill Planning Board and Board of Adjustment. My licenses are in good effect. My office prepared the survey and site plan that was submitted as part of the application package to its home.
Thank you, Rich. Mr. Steinberg, I asked that Mr. Keller be accepted as an expert in the field of engineering.
Yeah, so accepted.
Thank you. Rich, could you please describe to the board how you prepared for your testimony this evening, including the materials you reviewed? Any plans and exhibit prepared and your familiarity with the property?
Yes, certainly. Yeah, I've, well, first of all, I've prepared site plans for most of the buildings. On this block and certainly within three, four hundred feet of this property over the, over my thirty year career of working on properties in Milburn, thirty plus year. I've been to the, I also had the luxury of having a, a cat administrator who loved the, the Glenwood Luncheonette, which became the Glenwood Cafe. So we had lunch there probably every other week for at least ten years while, while Randy worked with us. I've also prepared, I've worked on the building immediately next door, the Glenwood Drive. I've, I've reviewed the zoning ordinance. I've reviewed. The, the master plan in preparation, just because we always do that. And again, my firm prepared the, the survey and the, and the variance application. We also did some research and obtained. Application materials from Tilly's to the building department, both from their architect and from the building department. And I've been to the site probably four times in the last two months.
Thank you, Rich. Could you please describe this? The existing site is located within the zone and within the block?
Yep, I'm going to share my screen here, which is the, everyone can see this. This is the use variance application that was submitted as part of the package. The, let me get rid of that. The, the property is located on the north side of Milburn Avenue. It is designated as five nineteen Milburn Avenue. That's tax lot two in block number seventeen oh seven. The, the property is approximately forty four point six seven feet by one hundred feet. It's, it's got forty four point six seven feet of frontage along Milburn Avenue. It is one property in from Glenwood Drive, the other part of the block being Campbell Road to the east. The, the property is wholly located in the B three business, business, neighborhood business zone. And the properties that are immediately behind the property that front on Meadowbrook are located in the R six zone. To, to go over the existing property. Again, the property actually is forty four point six seven, forty four point. Six seven on one side, forty four point eight five on the other side in width. Forty four point six seven on the tax map. The actual survey is forty four point eight five. The subject of the parcel that's, or the tenant space as part of the application tonight is the westerly eighteen feet, almost nineteen feet of that area. That it's nineteen feet is fifteen hundred and sixteen square feet of, of tenant space. And that is the site that where the Coney South is currently. And previously was the home of Tilly's Restaurant. And previous to that, it was the home of the Glenwood Luncheonette and subsequent Glenwood Cafe for more than forty years. The. The, most of the, the entire block is basically developed essentially in the same manner. All the buildings sit about five feet of, in this case, five point five feet, three, three feet from the street. They occupy sideline to sideline and they sit, in this case, thirteen point nine three, thirteen, almost fourteen feet from the back. That property line, that's those being the rear of the homes at front on Meadowbrook Drive. The, there is a stockade fence that runs along the entire property, along with some large trees. The neighbor on the, on the corner also has some trees that provides some shading on that side, but there is a stockade fence. Along the entire back border of the property. The. Just to get a little context, I'm also going to introduce an exhibit. This would be exhibit A one. It is an aerial photograph taken from nearmap.com. The imagery date is again March twen- March twenty first. In two thousand and twenty one. It's the late afternoon. This exhibit was prepared by on my office on May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty one.
Hey, Rich, Rich, excuse me a second. I, I believe, and Eileen, correct me if I'm wrong, I think this is part of the application packet.
Submitted it last minute. You're right.
Right, so, so I think that because it's part of the application packet, we do not need a market separately.
Yeah, I forgot that. Thanks, Rob. We, 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 we were able to get it done in time, so. This is part of your package, and this shows a little bit more of the neighborhood context. Again, Glenwood, Glenwood Drive being a hundred foot ride right away with a one way travel on either side of a, of a drainage brook. The property next door is vacant. That was subject to, used to be the Ganny Ross Optical. Recently had a car accident, maybe two months ago, that maybe even three months ago, that damaged the facade. It's been somewhat renovated. And actually, this is now owned, this was repossessed by the bank and is currently vacant. Next to that is the Bocconi South site that we're talking about. Next to that is we share the building with the stone and tile. We share the backyard with them as well. The next building over to the east was, was destroyed by fire a number of years ago. It's been under construction for a number of years as well. And they haven't managed to, to get any interest in terms, in terms of tenants to fit that out. The next two sites, the next building was actually the home of the squirrel and the bee for a number of years of food use. And the, next to that was the studio twelve hundred. Research space. They've now bought the building next door and they moved in, so you've got an under construction and two stores that are vacant on the block. That, that go, that define the block we're on. The property does have significant frontage on, on Milburn Avenue with parking allowed on street side through, through the pay station parking. That's on both sides of Milburn Avenue. I think our planner can talk about the, the time restrictions on that. Directly across the street are a number of businesses. They back onto municipal lot fourteen. So when there are business permits or any of the businesses that buy business permits, they all basically park back in municipal lot fourteen. Where you can see the breakdown of the parking that's provided. In the lower left hand corner, the yellow being the pay station parking. There are two hour parking through pay station. There are four candy cap spaces distributed to the site, six business only spaces, fourteen residential, twenty four hour spaces. And fifty three business and twenty four, so a total of ninety eight spaces available in that lot. And that serves the, that serves all of the permit parking for this, for the B three central, the B three neighborhood business district. The. If I go back to the. Variance application. The previous two uses, the, the Tilly's, the, the Glenwood Cafe obviously predates the zoning ordinance. That goes back more than forty years. That it was the Glenwood Luncheonette, which became the Glenwood Cafe. That, that was subsequently replaced by nineteen, two thousand and fifty by Tilly's Restaurant. They applied for building permits to renovate the space. They were granted those permits. They modernized the space and fitted out. And they, they did provide for, actually, I'm going to go one more exhibit here, Rob. The. What I have here before you is the building permit application from.
Okay, wait, wait, hold on a second. Hold on a second. What you're showing us. Is before we even mark it, why don't you provide a proffer as to what, what you're going to show?
That's what I was just starting to do. What we have here is the building permit package that was submitted on behalf of Tilly's Restaurant back in two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and fifteen. It shows the proposed floor layout plan as well as the existing demo floor plan. It was.
Okay, okay, okay. Hold on. How many, how many sheets in total is this building permit package?
The permit package in here is three sheets, and I'll be referring to the first sheet. And this was obtained from the building department a few weeks ago.
Okay, so let's, let's first mark this as A one for identification. And you'll provide that to the board, Rich?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so A one building permit package consisting of three sheets. And you're starting to go through particularly with regard to the first sheet.
Yeah, the first sheet, I think the critical elements are, is it was prepared in two thousand and fourteen. You can see. On the right side of the building, it was approved by the building department, the electrical department, plumbing department was all approved in two thousand and fifteen. So the certainly, what, what's, what's conspicuous in its absence is for some reason, when it came in. Sort of, sort of through a fluke, we suspect in the building department process, it never routed through zoning, so. But it did submit for permits to basically fit out and demo the existing Glenwood Luncheonette, Glenwood Cafe. Remove the booths, remove the service counter, remove the tables in the front, remove the kitchen area, basically rework the entire structure. This was actually subsequent to us, this was a subject to a subsequent revision, which will be my next exhibit. But on the proposed floor plan, this provided for fifty seven seats throughout the, the restaurant. And the existing demo plan actually shows there were ten booths for thirty two spaces. There were ten at the counter. There were the. The four tops at the, the four, four tops for sixteen. So there was a total of fifty eight spaces in the Glenwood Luncheonette, which I use it as an excuse to call my, my former employee. Who, who reminded me that she has photos of us at those tables at the front. There were four there. There was no seating at the left counter, but there was seating for ten customers along the, the, the countertop at the, at the luncheonette. Subsequent to that, so this is basically to show that we have a seating count for what existed at the Glenwood Luncheonette. Slash Glenwood Cafe, and we have an approved plan for the fifty seven seats for the Tilly's Restaurant. I have then an A two, which would be an addendum to that work, which was also again routed through the building department in two thousand and fifteen. This is a proposed floor plan labeled addendum one dated four four, 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 two thousand and fifteen. Sheets one of two, and I think there are two here, also prepared by William Big Door Architect. And this shows a revision, approved revision to the dining room layout where they actually up the seating count to sixty one spaces. And so while apparently it never got routed through the built, through the zoning department to decide whether a conditional use permit was required. I wanted to be, make the board clear that both the Glenwood Cafe, the Glenwood Cafe probably predated zoning. And then the Tilly's actually did follow the building department criteria and got all their permits. I have, actually have a colored drawing of all their inspections for the hood, et cetera. They did provide a brand new state of the art fire suppression system and, and hood, which was much better than what existed at the Glenwood Cafe. That was all done in two thousand and fifteen. Tilly's lasted for until about a year and a half ago, and they closed pre pandemic. And then about, as indicated, but Coney South not understanding that they needed to come in for a. A conditional use permit occupied that space. They took tenant space and began operating as a restaurant. And I, your planner can go a little further into that. So with regard to the. Zoning table, again. Restaurant uses are permitted conditional use within the B three neighborhood business district. There are three requirements. The first is that the, the. Closest part of the building so used as a restaurant has to be a hundred and twenty five feet from the nearest lot line of a single family dwelling in a residential district. One twenty five is required. The existing is thirteen point eight six, so this does not comply. So this, while there's no change, a use variance is required, and that's obviously indeed for use variance. With regard to the other two criteria, drive up windows are not permitted. There is no drive up window on the, on the property. And with regard to lot frontage, the property must have but a primary or secondary roadway. Milburn Avenue is a designated secondary roadway in our master plan, so this complies. So we don't need one of the three conditions of the conditional use, and that's why we need a D variance before you today. We also need a parking variance. As was indicated, the, where we got the providence of our parking numbers. The previous restaurant, which was the Tilly's, required twenty one spaces. None are provided on the site. None are provided, no legal spaces are provided on most of the properties along this section of Milburn Avenue. The proposed restaurant has forty eight seats, requires sixteen spaces. So while we actually require fewer spaces, we still need a variance for parking. And because we require fewer spaces, we did not need to, to apply for site plan approval. There's also no loading space on the site. One is required for the entire building. None exist. None have ever existed. And so we also need a variance from section six oh seven point one with regard to the number of loading spaces. Below that, we just reiterated the parking criteria. The previous Glenwood Cafe had fifty eight seats. At one for three required twenty. The previous Tilly's had sixty one. At one for three, they required twenty one. And but Coney South currently has forty eight seats with inside the restaurant and one for three, that's sixteen spaces required. So we need variance relief for these three items. There are some existing nonconforming conditions that run with the building, and they're not part of this application, and they're not changed. They go to the front yard setback and the rear yard setback, but there's no changes anticipated or requested as a part of that. Basically, this is a fully developed parcel that we're looking to move another restaurant back into. That's the, that's the nature of the existing site in the neighborhood. Unless you have any questions on that, I would turn it over for our planner to discuss the planning proofs and any other neighborhood specific criteria.
Mr. Steinberg, I have no further questions at this time.
Any questions from board members? Of this witness? I have a question, but I'll hold it. Is there any, are there any questions from members of the public of this witness? Eileen?
I have one hand raised from Jean Pasternak. I just want everyone to understand these are questions pertaining just to Rich Keller on the testimony that he provided.
Okay, let's.
Lo, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
But you need to be sworn first.
No, not for questions.
Oh, this is just for questions.
You have a question for Mr. Keller?
Um, yes, I'm sorry. I, maybe I got the voices mixed up, but I just heard a statement saying that we're looking to move the restaurant back into. Isn't it true that this restaurant has actually been there for over one year, correct?
That is. Yeah, that's, that's correct. It's been there for more than a year.
Okay.
Approximately. I, I don't, I don't know that to dispute that. It's been there for a while. Approximately, I don't, I don't know that to dispute that, it's been there for a while.
And and this, this, this restaurant did not apply one year ago before it moved in, but now a year later is applying for these variants. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And do you, can you explain why?
I, I think that's really more of a question for the attorney or the owner. I think that at the time, the it was represented to the applicant by the landlord that it was a turnkey operation because they were replacing a restaurant. So when that, we're we're now here basically to to get that condition approved.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I have some some information. The the application for this request was made, I believe sometime in November, December by prior counsel. I was not the attorney at the time. So there's a couple of months, at least half a year differential regarding, you know, when the application was actually submitted. So it is, it, the process had started some time ago.
But the restaurant moved in prior to any application being filed at all?
Correct.
Okay, and I guess my other question is, and again, if this is directed to the wrong witness, I apologize, and I'll bring these questions up to the correct witness at the right time. But I I I heard, was it, I'm not sure who said this, one of you two said that they have adhered to a good neighbor policy. Is that correct?
That was, that was me in my opening statement discussion act, that's right.
Okay, so that's not something I can question right now, that would be later.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Any anyone else in the audience?
Yes, um, let me just.
Questions only now.
Okay, let me just put this past her back, and I have a question, a hand raised. By. Mary McNabb, I will bring her over.
Question for the witness.
Yeah, I have a question. I know Eileen, I'm going to thank you, Mr. Steinberg, for your kind remarks at the beginning of the meeting.
You're quite welcome.
I know that when I name would see an application for a restaurant coming in that she would immediately know that it was a conditional use in that neighborhood. So so I am puzzled, I looked at the packet and I was looking for a resolution and finding none. I thought, well, there must be a reason why there was no resolution for conditional use on the Tilly's when Tilly's was in there. So can someone explain if they, I noticed, Mr. Keller, also, you went from the seating area, but you really didn't go into the kitchen area. Was there something in the kitchen area where they didn't need a conditional use variance?
No, I don't believe so, I, and I think perhaps Ms. Davic can also answer this. There are times when a modification or or alteration to an existing space comes into the building department, and it doesn't always get routed to zoning. I would suspect that if the if Tilly's had been routed to Eileen, she would have flagged it as a conditional use that didn't meet the conditions of the conditional use. And Tilly's would have been required to come before the board. Absent that knowledge, absent, absent that directive or any line of communication, Tilly's moved in, assuming that they were just turnkey operation taking over from the Glenwood Cafe or not turnkey operation, that they've taken over an existing use, an existing, what they presume to be a legal use. And they applied for building permits. They got all their permits, they got all their inspections, they put substantial investments into the into the kitchens, especially the ventilation system and the fire suppression system, and opened their restaurant. And it wasn't until, and then similarly, when Bouconne South had to leave South Orange because their building was being demoed as part of a downtown redevelopment, they found this space and was represented to them apparently by the landlord, that again, it was a turnkey operator. In this case, it was a turnkey operation in that they, there was an existing restaurant that they could just assume that use and move forward. They purchased the equipment. I don't think they purchased the business, but they purchased the equipment and opened up, not knowing that they needed to come before this board. So I don't think it was, I I think if the building department had recognized that it was not just an existing on alteration to an existing tenant, but a new tenant, and had it gone through the zoning, this would have been picked up in two thousand fifteen. Theoretically, we would have gotten that approval back then, and then that would have run with the land. It would be, it would be, it would be an extension of an existing nonconforming condition for them to have moved in. But since that didn't happen, my client, Bouconne South, is in the position where they they moved in on short notice, thinking they had the right to do so. And when it became evident that they didn't, there was some back and forth between them and their landlord. Ultimately, they retained an attorney and put an application in late last November. That attorney was not really a land use specialist, and that that attorney was dropped. Mr. Sukus was brought in, and that brings us to to current day. I'm happy to discuss the 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 kitchen layout. I thought what was most relevant about the drawings they submitted was that they showed dates that they were approved by the township. So there was not like they, they did all this work without permits. So they believed they were operating within the the requirements of the township. And I wanted to show the seating count, so that was my purpose for showing them. But I'm happy to discuss any of that, to the extent I I understand them, I'm happy to discuss any of the kitchen issues.
Thank you.
And by the way, I must say, I I do miss Ms. McNabb being on the board. I miss our spirited discussions about new paradigms in the in the B four district that that Ms. McNabb approved on many applications. So you're missed, and thanks, thank you for your service as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions from board members? Or from all from members of the public, either one? Well, I do, I do have one question. It's really a question directed to Mr. Sukis. Is it your client's position that somehow or other the town is stopped from denying the application that's before the board?
We, at this point, because this is a land use board, obviously, addressing question of whether or not that relief is granted. We we're not asserting a stop at this time before this board, but we did want to raise the issue so that it is at least on record, if need be, down the road.
Right here. Anyone else?
There are no other hands raised.
Any other questions from board members from Mr. Keller? Next witness, Mr. Sukis.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg, I'd like to call John Barry, our planner.
Good evening.
Good evening. Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give at tonight's Zoom hearing to be the truth, the whole truth, and by the truth?
I do.
Just state your name for the record, please.
John Barry. Sorry, yeah, sorry.
But could you please give the board the benefit of your educational background, your professional experience, and whether you've been qualified as an expert in this field in the past?
I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. I've had both a license and certification since two thousand fourteen. I have a master's of city and regional planning from Rutgers University. I'm a principal planner with Higher Gruel and Associates and have appeared before a number of boards, most recently in Summit, East Orange, East Newark over the last year or so. And I regularly represent about a half a dozen planning and zoning boards throughout the state.
Your license is currently in good for in full force and effect?
It is, yes.
Mr. Steinberg, I ask that Mr. Barry be approved as an expert in the field of municipal planning.
Approved.
Thank you. Mr. Barry, could you please advise the board the steps you took to prepare for your testimony this evening?
Sure, I will try not to to run over too much of the same ground that Rich covered because I know it is late. But in preparing for this application, I visited the subject property, took pictures, which I will share a few of in a moment. I I met with Ms. Davic at the zoning office, got a little bit of background on the property and the application, visited with the tax assessor and then looked over some some property cards to understand some of the history of of the property and what it's been used for over the years. And then reviewed the the township zoning ordinance, the application materials, the township's planning documents to come up with a complete picture of of what's going on here. So.
Go ahead, sorry.
So Rich did a great job of of covering the the basics of the the property from the top down. I will share a photo board that I put together. And I believe I might have lost count, I haven't marked as A three, is that current, Mr. Simon?
Yes, I believe we are up to A three, that is correct.
Okay. These are photographs taken by myself on May twenty first, May twelfth, rather, of this year. Five photographs of of the property and surrounding areas, and then one photograph of historic image from the the tax assessor's property card that just as a, as an artifact. The upper left.
Mr. Mr. Barry, you prepared this yourself?
I did, yes.
Please proceed.
Sure, the the upper left image that you can see here is the the view from from the street, from the sidewalk of the Bouconne South building on the left, the stone and tile design bu- business that shares the other half of the the same property. Middle photograph is a look across Milburn Avenue, similar storefronts along the other side. So the both sides of the street for at least this block and and the next block down have a similar commercial character. This image is a picture of the stockade fence that was described, it's in the backyard. This is a view standing roughly against the back of the Bouconne restaurant and a view of the stockade fence. The vegetation that's on the neighboring property, obviously, in in May, we have the benefit of leaves on the trees, but it's a fairly dense combination of of screening in the backyard. This is a photograph from standing in in Glenwood Drive, looking toward the east. This is the neighboring property behind the subject site. This is ten Glenwood Drive. This is a view of some of the vegetation that that exists on that property along the the common property line and a little bit in. And finally, for context, just another view of Milburn Avenue looking east at roughly eleven in the morning on a weekday. There was pretty much no one parked on the street. That would, that's not a benchmark for what we're looking at in the parking discussion. But just as a note, there is ample street parking along the frontage of the property and across the street. And then the last image is a picture of the Glenwood Luncheonette as it existed in approximately nineteen eighty four, taken from the picture that was attached to the the tax card in the tax assessor's office. So we know that there's been a restaurant of of one type or another in this location for plus or minus forty years and likely going back farther. So moving on from there, as Rich said, the properties of a little over forty four hundred square feet in area, of which the Bouconne portion is maybe forty percent of that, maybe a little less. We're not proposing any changes to the building, there's a, existing conditions are what are what they have been. Property, the building was constructed in nineteen forty three, according to the tax records. So it's, it's been in this configuration for some time. As Rich said, the neighboring properties along the block, we have, for the most part, the stone and tile design is occupied. And then the rest of the connected building is vacant. So there's kind of a dearth of activity, at least along this side of the the block and along this portion of Milburn Avenue. And then behind, we have residences on on fronting on Meadowbrook Glenwood and along Campbell, which is the next block to the east. As I mentioned, the property is in the B three neighborhood zone and is open. Mr. Sukis laid out the purpose, which is to provide for small scale commercial activities, serving the needs of residents in the surrounding area. Certainly, a restaurant with with forty eight seats and a footprint of about fifteen hundred square feet is is a small scale commercial activity. Certainly, that it's, it's very much a neighborhood style business. You're not turning hundreds of people through the restaurant in an evening, it just isn't possible. So there's a small scale to this business that that fits in with what's imagined for the neighborhood business zone. Restaurants are conditionally permitted uses. The requirement, the conditional use requirement that is not being met by the application is the hundred and twenty five foot setback to from the the building to the nearest lot line of a residential dwelling. And getting into the discussion of the conditional use, start with just a few common sense facts. The the lot itself is a hundred feet deep, so there's certainly no ability to to meet the hundred and twenty five foot requirement. Approximately fourteen feet is provided and has existed. Building has been in this location, as I said, since since nineteen forty three, with the the commercial strip along this portion of Milburn Avenue backing up onto residential properties. It's a similar pattern for a few blocks in a row, and there's been no change proposed and and no change over the years. So in looking at the conditional use, we believe sought, we have to consider the standard from the Coventry Square versus Westwood Board of Adjustment case in that the use is is permitted in the district. We have certain conditions who satisfied, and what the board must find is that the use will continue to be appropriate to this location despite the noncompliance with the specific noncompliance with the condition. So in this case, absent the ability to actually provide additional setback space, which is impossible due to the setback of the building, the the physical limitations of the property, what we can do is to take steps to mitigate any impacts. You heard the testimony from from Rich about the modernization of the building under the the previous occupant that was that was done, that was permitted, if not necessarily approved by zoning. There are certainly proper inspections done to modernize the kitchen and its exhaust equipment. You heard in Mr. Sukis's opening that since we've begun this process, the the business owner has taken steps to further improve the ventilation by rerouting the exhaust exhaust fan on the exterior of the building, adding additional screening to that exhaust fan, taking steps to ensure that there's no refuse being stored in the area behind the restaurant, that the backyard is being kept orderly, making sure that the back door of the kitchen is being kept closed to limit any noise that may be a disturbance to the neighbors. So with the the limited amount of of space available to work with, I think that it's clear that the property owner, the the business owner, rather, is taking, taking the steps that he can to to mitigate conditions that that may be disruptive to the surrounding properties, and is certainly willing to to continue to work with the the board and the township to make sure that the the restaurant remains a good neighbor. And I think it's worth noting, as we've all said several times, that this property has been used as a restaurant throughout its history. And it certainly fits in with the the character of the neighborhood business zone and the history of the property to to remain a restaurant. I'll I'll touch on the negative criteria in a in a group with all of the with the bulk variances as well. But I'll jump into the the parking quickly using Mr. Keller's previous exhibit. So this is we're back, you can, can we see the aerial photo, the parking exhibit? Okay, so the the subject property outlined in green, at least a portion of it, along Milburn Avenue, there are are paid metered parking spaces, which is, which is a benefit to businesses that have turnover, that people aren't going to be. Have turnover, that people aren't going to be parking there and staying all day long. They come, they can stay for three hours, which is what's. Permitted in the the Zone Z municipal parking. That's what's uh along Melbourne Avenue in this location. It's a pay by plate system with a um pay stations along the blocks. There are eight spaces along the north side of the block between Glenwood and Campbell here. There are another ten spaces along the south side up to just past the intersection with Campbell. And then between Glenwood Drive, moving south down to Balthus Roll Way. We have thirteen spaces on the north side, seventeen spaces on the south side. Um and then there's an additional seven spaces between Campbell and Short Short Hills Avenue. So in total, there's about fifty five street parking spaces within. A block walk in in either direction of of the restaurant. In addition, there's the municipal parking lot fourteen, which provides for. A a variety of different permit options, along with two hour parking pay station spaces. So there's a total of twenty one available pay station spaces in in that lot and the ability to get um. Business permits to the extent that they are necessary. As Mr. Sukas indicated in the open, there's six employees at the restaurant. The owner and his son and and another employee carpool together. And it's our understanding that at any given time, the the six employees only require two vehicles. So our requirement for the parking for this restaurant is sixteen spaces. The um. At any given point, there's um probably about eighty public spaces available between paid parking spaces on Melbourne Avenue. And municipal lot fourteen. The other businesses along Melbourne Avenue, especially on the north side, are um more of an office nature, retail storefronts. Um professional businesses that um keep more daytime hours. And the Bocconi South Restaurant is really an evening place of business. Um it's open for dinner and. So that there's a nice balance between the parking demand of of the neighboring uses and the parking demand for a restaurant in the evening. The main factor in analyzing the C one, the C variance for the insufficient parking is as a C one hardship variance. Um this is a property on which there is no space to to build parking, regardless of what the use. Were contained in the building, there's no ability to provide parking on site. The other properties along Melbourne Avenue with similar configurations are are in the same boat. And it's consistent with the 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 purpose of the neighborhood business zone to have these smaller scale lots. To have smaller scale businesses that don't have large onsite parking lots that can rely on shared street parking. So with the hardship of of being unable to provide parking on site based on the. Location of the structures lawfully existing on the property and the unique characteristics of the site. That really inhibit the extent to which it can be used and the ability to provide parking. There's justification to granting the the parking variance under the C one hardship standard. The other bulk variance that that we need to address is with regard to loading. One loading space is required where none is provided. It's the same situation as as parking. There's no ability to provide an onsite loading zone, onsite loading space. The restaurant at its the small scale gets deliveries from from box truck van, kinds of vehicles. Those deliveries are able to be accommodated through the front door of the restaurant. The uh. Delivery vehicles can use the space along Melbourne Avenue to park and make their deliveries through the front door of the restaurant. There's no uh. Certainly no detriment associated with that and the other businesses along the corridor are in a similar. Similar configuration and the hardships associated with parking on site are are the same as for the loading on site. The. Just to cover all the bases briefly, um these ju- variances can also be be justified under a a C two balancing test. To adv- where they advance the purposes of zoning, um neighborhood retail and. Ensuring vibrant downtown commercial corridors is something that a lot of towns are struggling with. Um I know that. The township is undergoing and studies in the more in the B four part of town, but. Continuing to try to figure out how to ensure vibrant commercial corridors um with all the competing e-commerce and other. Uh intervening factors like the global pandemic that have made. Restaurant business and small scale retail very challenging even more so than it had been previously. So continuing to um. Combat the vacancy of storefronts, ensuring that there's avenues available for small businesses to occupy these spaces. Certainly promotes the the general welfare as purpose A of of zoning. Um also promotes purpose G of providing sufficient space in appropriate locations for a variety of uses. Um walkable downtown with common centralized parking has has long been a goal of the township. And this is a as a secondary commercial corridor that still retains a pedestrian scale, retains that neighborhood business feel. And continuing to promote that through this type of small business is is certainly a a valid purpose of zoning. And then finally, it meets purpose J to preventing urban sprawl and degradation of the environment through the improper use of land. The compact form that we have here that's historic, dates back to the the forties. Um does not rely on a large field of of parking on site. And can share that parking resource with its neighbors is is beneficial from a from a design perspective, beneficial from a. Perspective of combating urban sprawl. So continuing to reuse these resources is certainly valuable. And with regard to the negative criteria for both the D three conditional use variance and the the C variances. To demonstrate that the use can, the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. For the conditional use, I mentioned the applicant is has taken and is continuing to ta- take steps to ensure that. The restaurant can operate without detriment to the neighboring properties. The. Various uh activities in the backyard are limited. The storage is um taken in ta- um in enclosures. The cooking smells are being mitigated through rerouting the exhaust fan and upgrades to the exhaust fan. And noise issues are being dealt with by by keeping the the door to the kitchen closed and and keeping down the the volume. The site has a the advantage of having a a proof of of use. The property's been a restaurant for for decades and this is not a not a new use at this location. So certainly, um there's the ability, the site has shown the ability to accommodate a restaurant over the years. Without detriment to the public good. The um. And of course, as I said, the property owner is willing to continue to work with the board and the township to ensure that it it is a good neighbor. Regarding the uh other bulk variances, the parking and the loading, as I said, there there's available parking on the street and then in lot fourteen. Um by design, these spaces are meant to turn over. The the relatively small scale of of the restaurant. Ensures that it it can operate within the number of spaces that are available. There'll be no detriment to the immediate neighbors that are occupied with um. Daytime uses along along the north side of Melbourne Avenue in particular, as I said. And the the balance between the the busy evenings at Bocconi will be offset by the the lack of daytime activity. And finally, the um. Variances must be shown to be granted without impairment of the zoning ordinance and master plan. The proposed use, the restaurant use is conditionally permitted, which means that the governing body has determined that the location is appropriate for this use. Well, as we talked about the purpose of the B three zone, the neighborhood business zone, providing small scale commercial uses. So it certainly fits right in with with the purpose of the zone. The. Bulk standards in the zoning ordinance um have been put in place since the the structure was was built. Which dates back nearly eighty years, so the the current zoning certainly wasn't in place eighty years ago. The um and then with regard to the master plan. In the two twenty two twenty eighteen reexamination report, there was um. Some concern expressed by stakeholders and residents about the the revitalization of of this proportion of Melbourne Avenue. And I think that the continued vacancy of some of the the properties along this block and um certainly the damage of the corner unit now. Are um. Our struggle that the that that needs to be overcome and and continuing to support vibrant businesses in these spaces is important. Um goal, objective two point oh three of the master plan. So allow for conveniently located parking throughout the the various township business areas, which the municipal lots and on-street spaces do. Um taking we're taking advantage of that and it's consistent with that goal, objective. Um goal four is to maintain and enhance economic vitality of the downtown and other business dri- districts. Objective six point oh two is to encourage the redevelopment of underutilized or vacant commercial property in order to preserve open space. Again, by by using using these existing storefronts rather than building new and and the attendant. You know, parking fields to go along with them. It's a much more efficient use of space in the township. And finally, the recommendations associated with the B three zone identify that that this area in. Along Melbourne Avenue has been in transition and suffering from a number of vacancies. So continuing to retain the restaurant at this location is is an important um step toward furthering the goals of the master plan. The under under the B three, they recommend reviewing land use procedures and modifying regulations to make it easier and less expensive. For new businesses to locate in Melbourne and certainly demonstrates a an open door. Um attitude toward new businesses and um certainly Bocconi is uh willing to do everything it needs to do to to. Might make its way through this process. So in conclusion, we have um a variety of existing conditions. We have a the history of this property being used as a restaurant. There are hardships associated with the physical constraints of the property, the location of the building, the size of the property. That limit what can be done with it, but ultimately. The the relief that's being sought can be granted without substantial detriment to the neighborhood, to the township. The the benefits of of granting the bulk variances certainly outweigh the detriments. There's a hardship associated with providing for the bulk con- the conditions that are being sought and the conditional use. Standard can be mitigated through um programmatic measures such as the ones that have already been taken and will will continue to be taken. So with that, I put forward that the board can can grant the requested relief for the conditional use variance and to bulk variances. And be happy to field any questions you may have.
Thank you, John. Mr. Steinberg is muted.
I was I was muted, I'm sorry. This is Sukas. Uh something very strange has happened here. Your planner and your engineer have testified. To facts that they were in no position to testify to. For example. There was some talk about something up on the roof. Who was on the roof? Who saw this uh uh equipment that was supposedly. Directing um smells and whatever in a different direction from. The uh from the residences. Uh who who uh testified as to the garbage? Uh and the handling of the garbage. Who testified as to the fact that the. Door to the kitchen was kept closed and that there was a rule about no music. In the kitchen. I could go on and on, but your engineer and your planner. Mentioned those particular uh facts and a lot of others. That they were in no position uh to uh have uh. Uh witnessed, at least they didn't say that they witnessed them. Uh so I think that we have a basic problem here, despite the fact that. In addition to the fact, I should say that we're running very, very late, but uh. Uh I heard all kinds of facts coming out of the mouths of expert witnesses. That were not uh put forth by people who were in a position. To run the operation and were able to testify to how it was being run. That's a a comment of mine that you can do with as you please. But in any event, I don't think we're going to a vote tonight. Where I uh my screen is now not showing me the time. But I know that it's somewhere around uh. Ten thirty five or ten forty five, somewhere around there.
Ten fifty.
Ten fifty. Okay, we've had enough tonight. Eileen, when is the next time these folks can come back?
And uh Mr. Chairman, you would start with the opportunity. For questions by board members and the public of Mr. Barry.
Yes, definitely.
And Mr. Chairman, based on your comments, I would appreciate the opportunity and I think it'd be wise for us to call. Silvio Caruso, the owner of the restaurant, who would have firsthand knowledge of the topics that you have raised. And we can save that for next time.
That's what I was driving at. Uh Eileen.
I would say safely August sixteenth.
August.
Sixteen.
Sixteenth, one, six.
We only have one meeting in July. It's already. And June's been booked, July's been booked. First meeting of August is taken for a private meeting at August sixteenth.
Mr. Sukas, that's where we'll begin with the questioning of Mr. Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Steinberg. Appreciate that.
Is there a uh so this matter will be carried without further notice. Or publication required to the evening of August sixteenth, two thousand twenty one. Uh this is the meeting beginning at seven o'clock of this zoning board of adjustment. Uh which will be a Zoom meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Steinberg.
At some point, we're gonna get back to City Hall.
I think we're trying to um, we're trying to get back onsite first, starting in September, but. They have to fix the township committee room because it's been. Not gonna accommodate us right now.
Right.
I think that's what we're shooting for.
Okay, so August sixteenth is the date, seven, seven P M Zoom meeting. Okay, and then we'll start with a questioning of Mr. Barry. With that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We said that.
Craig.
Great. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All in favor?
Alright.
Hi.
Let's see, hands.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Night, everybody. We'll see you on the.
Night, all.
See you in two weeks.